Good evening, citizens, council and staff. I call the City Council Meeting of July 5th, 2016 to order. Clark Hefner, would you call the roll?
Mayor Beckman?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brinkman?
Here.
Councilmember Cernanik?
Present.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Hopping?
Here.
Councilmember Valdez?
Present.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my nation. I am invisible, liberated, and free, as this is for all. Counsel, an agenda has been posted and presented to City Council. Are any changes or additions to the agenda?
I do have question, what is the item seven? No, excuse me, seven C?
Yes. Seven C, Phil?
Have a question?
Yeah, what are we being asked to reconsider?
Vote at last meeting.
Pardon?
Vote at last meeting. I'd be happy to do that.
What did you say, you're happy to do that, Jerry?
I did.
So, you're willing to suspend council's legislative rules to do that?
No.
Pardon?
No.
Well, legislative rules don't allow us to reconsider a vote afterwards. I'm not arguing necessarily what, just what our rules are.
So, my understanding of the rules, in our legislative rules, a vote for reconsideration is something that is done during the same session at which a matter is brought up. At the end of that session, the opportunity to do a reconsideration ends with the end of that session. So, based on what I'm hearing, a vote for reconsideration would not be according to our rules. Discussion?
Yes, and there are rules, and we can possibly work with them. I would like to make the request.
Okay, let's leave it on the agenda, and we'll get to that point, and we'll decide how we're going to do it.
Shouldn't we address the agenda now, though?
Well, there's an opportunity to suspend our rules, which is what Phil just applied to the discussion, so we could suspend our rules and decide that that's something that we could reconsider again, but we would have to vote on that matter also. So, I'm just thinking, in order to move on, when we get to item seven C, we could discuss the legislative rules, the consideration for suspending our rules, and again, the reconsideration needs to be done at the same session. Okay. This brings us to item four on the public comment. Item four on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to express opinions or ask questions that are not part of the public hearings. There's two opportunities for public comment, at the beginning of the meeting regarding the consent agenda and general business items, and later in the meeting before council reports. An immediate response should not be expected. Anyone who would like to speak during either public comment session should sign on the green first public comment sheets, which I have here. And if someone has missed the opportunity to, I'll make sure that I ask again. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated. There's a three-minute time limit, and going down the green sheets that I have here, we have about 16 people who've chosen to speak. So, what I will do, in order to keep it moving on, is I will try to remember to say who's on deck, so that that person can be ready to respond as the next person. First person to speak is Paul Bingham. And Carol Porter is on deck.
Good evening, council. Paul Bingham, 236 West Delaware Circle. I hope you all had a happy Fourth of July. I see none, we got blown up, and that's good. Please, I'm talking about item 5A on the consent list. Prue, please approve ordinance 5A to abolish Lyft. And I'd recite all the reasons to you, but there's a bunch of them, you've heard them all several times, so I'm going to give you a break. I would also request, along with approving that ordinance, that it be amended, section 2A be amended. There's an audit of their books, Lyft's books, needs to be done, and the money that they have left over needs to be turned to the city. There's a bunch of the money, $150,000 or so dollars, that could be used very well to fix our streets. So, I'd appreciate your approval of that with that amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Carol Porter and Carolyn Bradish is on deck.
Good evening, council. My name is Carol Porter. I live in District 3. I'd like to read into the minutes this evening excerpts from two emails written by council members Brinkman and Hopping, in addressed to the entire city staff. First, from Debbie Brinkman at littletin.gov.org, carbon copy, Michael Penny. Dear everyone, under normal circumstances, Michael would have my head for sending an email to all of staff, but these are not normal circumstances. I cannot express how sorry I am that there were four votes to remove Michael from the job he loves. I can tell you how sorry I am that every attempt to alter this outcome failed. Michael made me a better counselor. He taught me, guided me, followed me, led me, picked me up, scolded me, praised me, and was my friend. I am ashamed of council. I don't care if my comments aren't PC, screw PC. Michael did not deserve to lose his job. Four votes were wrong. I am sorry that massive egos and lack of communication and petty insecurities were the basis for the firing of one of the best city managers in the state of Colorado. What the hell, seriously, what the hell? I know that it's scary to have a council that is absolutely certifiably insane, emphasis added. In closing, I want to thank each of you for keeping this place we call Littleton going. It's you, not the crazy council, it's you, emphasis added. I'm so sorry. I am sorry that this happened, that we couldn't stop it, that it makes no damn sense. I'm just so sorry, I'm just so damn sorry. Thank you, thank you for everything always, Debbie Brinkman, Mayor Pro Tem, City of Littleton. From Bill Hopping, I want to apologize on behalf of common decency for Michael's dismissal. It was cowardly, it was the work of council members Beckman, Cole, Clark, and Valdez. Debbie and I tried, but were outnumbered. They did it when Councilman Cernanik was out of town. As Debbie said in her note, Michael believes deeply in you. We don't know what succession will look like, but be assured that we will look for the best possible person for the job. If you have any thoughts along those lines, please contact either Debbie or me. We need you, and the city needs you, any interim call at any time. This evening, I request that the members of council vote to censure council members Hopping and Brinkman, as they have blatantly disregarded and consciously disrespected their offices. They have violated the city charter, section 32, council not to interfere with administrative service by bypassing the acting city manager and contacting the administrative service directly. In addition, with purposeful neglect, their individual actions demonstrated incivility towards council, the city staff, and the citizenry by disregarding the protocols and standards of conduct adopted on February 2nd, 2016. Section 2, paragraph J, council should refrain from undermining the council as a whole or undermining an individual member. After the decision has been made, the member should support the decision of the body and move forward. Finally, councilwoman Brinkman, in her role as Mayor Pro Tem, should be held to a higher standard in the performance of her duties. Because she chose to violate the city's charter and its protocols and standards of conduct, I request the council vote to relieve her of her duties as Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn Bradish, and Pat Cronenberger's on deck.
Good evening, council members. My name is Carolyn Bradish. I live in District 1. First of all, I'd like to speak about item 5A on the consent agenda, the ordinance abolishing Littleton's for tomorrow, urban renewal. I am very much in favor of having urban renewal continue in the city of Littleton. So, I request, please, give it your consideration. Do not vote for this ordinance. As a practicing real estate professional, this is a bad thing for the city, to take urban renewal off the table completely. While this got off to a poor start with the public, and maybe could use some tweaking, some renovating, some changes to the program, you must leave it on the table for the future of our city and for future development in our city. We've got plenty of citizens who want to see the city move forward with desperately needed urban renewal projects, so please do not take this off the table. Second thing I would like to talk about is item seven under general business, the interim city manager. I have two major concerns in this area. Number one, there does not appear to be an interim city manager at this point. I may be mistaken in that, but the last information I had was that that job had not been filled. Secondly, I am truly concerned about the ability of this council to hire a new city manager who is credible, well-qualified, and experienced, and would take a job in a city where the council so abruptly and without good cause fired a very competent city manager who was one that the general citizenry really, truly thought was headed in the right direction. Let's not take Littleton back in time. We want a good city manager, but I'm really concerned about who will take this job after the actions that were done to fire city manager Penny. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat Cronenberger, followed by Julie Devon.
Good evening, council. Pat Cronenberger, 5796 South Lakeview. I'd like to address two items on your general business agenda. One of them has to do with the protocols discussion. I have heard a rumor, and perhaps it's been confirmed, that this agenda item is because of Mayor Pro Tem Brinkman's correspondence to staff after the termination of Michael Penny, Penny's employment. I hope this is not the case. The firing will no doubt go down in Littleton's history as a particularly ugly moment in our history, and I think Debbie Brinkman's only guilty of being a human being with emotions. And I would expect that this discussion would take on a broader form and address the many protocol transgressions that have happened with this council over the last five months. There's no shortage to councilmember Clark wanting to use his campaign email rather than the Littleton address, Mayor Beckman proposing a motion at a meeting a couple of months ago, without his colleagues knowing in advance, and not being published on the agenda. So, there's much to talk about, and I hope there will not be any piling on to what Mayor Pro Tem Brinkman may have done. The other item I want to address is the interim city manager contract. This obviously signals the finding, the search for a new city manager, but what I would suggest that you all pursue first is scheduling a meeting with Sam Mamet of the Colorado Municipal League, and having a workshop on what it means to be a policymaking body. Until this is understood, I believe you are setting the next city manager up for failure. This is especially so the case for the four council members who pursued the termination of Michael Penny's employment. While these council members definitely need a refresher course in what it means to abide by open meeting laws, the big issue is that you really don't understand your policymaking roles, and seem to be more comfortable, time after time, wanting to do staff's job, whether it's writing the minutes and how they get done, offering legal opinions and so forth. So, the city needs a majority of council members who understand its policymaking role and can chart a path forward. Bottom line, until this is done, you will be setting the next city manager up for failure. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Devon, followed by Frank Malara.
Hi. My name is Julie Devon, and I live in District 4. I will be presenting agenda item seven C, addressing agenda item seven C, and presenting a letter of no confidence to Mayor Beckman, council members Clark, Cole, and Valdez. Littleton consistently ranks very high on lists of the best places to live. There's positive energy, nice open space, good schools, a vibrant business community, and a city staff that takes pride in providing both quality services and a value for the taxpayers' dollar. So, why on June 14th did Mayor Bruce Beckman and council members Doug Clark, Peggy Cole, and Jerry Valdez vote to terminate the city manager, Michael Penny? Penny was recognized as one of the best city managers in Colorado, and had a demonstrated track record of achievement in Littleton. Support of Michael Penny's leadership was expressed by community leaders, state and local government officials who worked with him, and members of the Littleton Police Department and Littleton Fire Rescue Labor Unions. But Penny's extensive list of achievements and commitment to open and transparent communication essentially counted for nothing. Rather, his dismissal was based on the flimsiest of pretenses. In truth, it was an act of sabotage by council members who have effectively pledged allegiance to a small group with a long history of stridently obstructing virtually all city activities aimed at reasonably preserving Littleton's charm while proactively planning for the future. It appears nothing short of making a minimalist libertarian view of government our reality, which would pay havoc on our property values. By denouncing virtually all development out of hand, even where projects fit well within the character of the community, the anti-group imperils the future prosperity of the city they claim to love. They hypocritically, if I can turn the page, I'm sorry, advance a philosophy that might be characterized as "my rights are invaluable while yours are questionable." Mayor Bruce Beckman choreographed four votes out of the public's view, then conspired to hold the ballot on a night when council member and former mayor Phil Cernanek was not to be present. He wholly gave himself over to the tendency of politicians to focus on the ends versus the means. His complete disinterest in working with the city manager to resolve perceived issues is a clear abdication of leadership. As a former Littleton police officer, he should have known better. Thank you for your time.
Frank Malara, followed by Sally Johnson.
Hello. My name is Frank Malara. I live in the 4th district, and I will continue reading the letter of no confidence. Further, Beckman recently allowed a motion by Councilman Clark intending to revoke a lawful building permit that could have resulted in an illegal settlement costing the taxpayers over $30 million. Such an outcome would have dramatically curtailed the city's ability to provide police-
Excuse me, sir. We're just having a little trouble here, and if you could put the mic towards you. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Such an outcome would have dramatically curtailed the city's ability to provide police, fire services, street repairs, library, museum operations, and more. Ultimately, cooler heads prevailed, but the mere consideration of such an outrageous and reckless proposal seriously calls into question Beckman's judgment. Mayor Beckman, Councilman Cole, Clark, Valdez dishonor themselves and a great city. Littleton's long tradition of working together to create a better future is who we are and always aspire to be. Such gross responsibility should not pass without public rebuke. We hereby declare the message of no confidence in Mayor Beckman and council members Clark, Cole, and Valdez. I'm going to read the names of the people that signed this no confidence. Keith Taylor, Lisa Garnett Taylor, Casey Taylor, Edward Taylor, Corey Taylor, Deborah Khorstov, Kevin Khorstov, Anne Mather, Tammy St. John, Troy Gray, Shelley Gray, Ann Cochran, Carolyn Brandish, Julie Hobson, Dana Moretti, Ralph Degrassi, Carolyn Degrassi, Jim DeFranco, Janet Rich, Sally Covington, William Brandish, Norman Stuckey, George St. John, Randy Stein, Marcy Ventier, Marie Chigoli, Karen Kaplan, David Fisher, John Van Dyke, Ellen Van Dyke, Sally Parsons, Carrie Winter, Ned White, Jim Brown, Sally Jansen, Curtis Williams, Sharon Williams, Rebecca Spencer, Carla Donaldson, Rebecca Askew, Dan Boyd, Teddy Courtney, Susan Thornton, John Thornton, Florence Bullock, Joyce Franklin, Richard Hanley, Vincent Xavier, Jim Hart, Encella Hart, Julie Devon, Betty McGinnis, Kathy Schwartz, Sandra Farish, Dean Burkinfield, Rebecca Collins, John Tortellano, Scott Wisher, Neil Avervalas, Evan Avervalas, Jan Holmes, Lisa Anagren, Gary Thompson, Sherman Snead, Karen Millsap, Phil Lutz, Jaclyn Puttsman. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally Jansen, followed by Dana Moretti.
Good evening, I'm Sally Jansen, also from District 4. Mildred Lang, Chris Gibbons, Madeline Clary, Kathy Martinez, Jason Johnson, Wilhelm Estes, Sean Carlisle, Christine Woods, Rose Medina, Paula Frey, Andy Mestes, Parn Rose, Kristen Ryder Beatty, Benven Matthew, Charlotte Martinez, Leah Martin, Pam Jewitt, Becky Miller-Fei, Louis Caldon, Brad Peterson, Amy Kearney, Claudia Reyes, Jan Tompkins, Ronnie Crane, Miguel Raisel, Mitch Erickson, Raymond Hurt, Tony Michael Joseph Montoya, Jenny Larson Flauter, Kiki Gonzalez, Aiden Araliel, Patricia Cronenberger, Kelly Shelley, Sandra Brown, Annette Bendoza, Jean Pizano, Dennis Tione, Rodney Green, Philip Martinez, Teddy Jordan, Gabe Martinez, Luc Crasia, Holmes, Julie McRae, Bryant Savage, Ingrid Cruz, Christina Leroy, Lisa Bowman, Reyna Flora, Jim Hirsch, Shirley Jo, Lisa Hogset Penny, Shirley Valdez, Michael Smith, Dorothy Biggs, John Sanchez, Rick Cronenberger, Richard Marshall, Marshall Harrell, Tanner Dalton, Tawana Jordan, Donald Porter, Helen Johnson, Eddie Lisa Martinez, Bugsy Matt Holland, Susan Levon, Debbie Curtis, Veronica Gonzalez, Nathan Briggs, Beth Fuller, Jorge Villagron, Kristi Olivas, Terrence Gutierrez, Jessica Robles, Jamie Hagay, Justin Bertle, Anna Corarte, Chris Petrie, Aurora Gonzalez, Kathy Littleton, Michael Hill, Melissa Green, Anna Cardenas, Violet Spearman, Maggie Becca, Harley Hayman, Meli Coronado, Roger Galvin, Terry Clark, Deborah Archuleta, Sarah Tapia Sanchez.
And you're out of time. If you wanted to pass that to the next person, thank you. Dana Moretti, followed by Karen Millsap.
Hi, Dana Moretti, 2988 West Roland, District 4. Michelle Lacante, Jeremy Pesquell, Michelle McMurray, Angel Cruz, Heather Nayer, Lexie Robert, Daris Zavrotinek, Sandy Farish, Darla Difford Daniel, Glenn Rogers, Anne Hurst Signorale, Kelly Stallman, Rita DeJure, Jessica Lund, Carl Zimmerman, Jessica Thomas, Arlene Johnson, Adrian Brown, Owen Kemp, Cindy Christensen, Brad Ulig, Peter Lund, Catherine Torfino, Kay Watson, Sean Thorpe, Patrick McBride, Eric Kirchner, Holly Bolota, Billy M.D. Williams, Elsa Afaro, Carter Arun, Mark Windermiller, Justin Carr, John Haushaud, Ginger Peretti, Elizabeth Eaton, Andrew Konenberger, Ted Morris Bush, George Jones, Jelly Malik, Maureen Rabnik, Roxanne Rodriguez, Joe Fountain, Kathleen Santos, Joseph Harris, Shirley Harris, Valerie Park, Bob Hill, Anthony Roebuck Jr., Beth Fuller, Amy Terry, Wade Perry, Frank Malara, Kim de Blasio Sorentino, Lori Toll, Jill Carter, David Pierce, Michael Jones, Nikki Marty, Christine Wright, Marian Henrichsen, Judy Sarlo Ellander, Katie Harkin, Cadalucho Wright, Brian Marshall, Cara Marshall, Martha Galindo, Ryan Neal, Trish Turner, Molly Behakli, Kim Larson, Emily Waldo, Inez Prasada, Tricia Orana, Gabe Romero, Karen Cook Campton, Emily Valentine, Demaris Mija, Mary De La Torre, Clifton Rovertin, Nancy Robles, Mike Valentine, Corey Pacchio, Maria Benedito, Linda J. Brandon, Kristen Byrne, Mary Kutschman, Karen Valdez, Kathleen Monroe, Amy Kenny, Fatima Slade, Linda Lancaster, Jared Runyon, Douglas Larson, Clara Ehrenholz, Carol Grape, Paul Falk, Max Haber, Stu Meeger, Fatima Spacota, Pam Whelan, Frank Cole, Jenny Cole, Cindy AV Redeemer, Luc Garcia-
And you're out of time. Can you pass that? Thank you. Karen Millsap, followed by Arthur Resek.
Good evening. I'm Karen Millsap. I'm in District 4 as well. Omar Cantu, Alexi Laura, Eleanor Grace Davis, Ron Burns, Shawna Lawrence, Robin McDonald, Laura Onavell, Catherine Madrid, Zachary Rowley, Dawn Haight, Ken Naples, Sister Afari, Joe Ventura Mestes, Yvonne Thompson, Rochelle Lynn Munoz, Rosario Jimenez, Beatrice Martinez, Roberta Benedict, Kyle Henderson, Mary Magordi Van Minnen, Brent Tyler Cervosa, Jeff Farmer, Becky McCain, Douglas Hauck, Dana Hickman Bailey. I also would like to say that we ask there be a reconsideration of the vote to fire the city manager and that, at the very least, he be reinstated and placed on a performance plan agreeable to all of you on council. The lack of openness and communication is very disturbing. You've destroyed the trust that many of us have placed in you. We'll not forget this when it's time to reelect any of you. Thank you to Mayor Pro Tem Brinkman and council member Hopping for trying to restore some order to the chaos on June 14. The absence of Mr. Cernanek was felt, and it's widely known that had he been there the night of the vote to place Mr. Penny on a work plan, may have ended very differently. Littleton is awake. We're watching. We're paying attention. We have a voice. We're engaged. We will not let our communities suffer due to the extreme views of few. We expect our leaders to lead and not to follow. This is a campaign for our future. Twelve days ago, we put this issue on Facebook, and today, there are over 1,000 followers on the page, and we just read over about 300 names of the people who've signed the letter of no confidence. We aren't going away. We're getting stronger every day. We're awake.
Arthur Resek, followed by Allison Resek.
Hi, Arthur Resek. I am a resident of 6095 South Valley View, just moved to Littleton about a year and a half ago. I'm also a Realtor and think it is asking that you do consider taking 5A off the ballot. I think it's very important that we develop Littleton, coming to Littleton as a Realtor. I do a lot of commercial as well. I think it's very important that we get the tax dollars and let our city flourish. Also, I'd like to add my name to that list that they were reading because I also have no confidence in the four council members. I watched the replay on the internet and was very disappointed in the four of you, and I would like to add my name to that letter. Arthur Resek. Thank you.
Allison Resek, followed by Jeannie Erickson.
Thank you for allowing us to come out and voice our opinions. I know many of you. I have represented some of you at different South Metro Denver Chamber events when I was a member of the chamber or a member of staff. Oh, excuse me. Allison Resek, 6095 South Valley View Street. At any rate, I'm glad to have known you and just so very disappointed in what's going on here and now. I also know so many of the people on the list have had very strong contact with many of them through my role on the Littleton Public Schools Foundation Board. I really believe strongly in Michael Penny. It was one of the reasons why we moved to Littleton from Jefferson County, and I am just so very saddened by where we are today, and I felt it very important to come and talk to you about it, just let you know how important it is to move forward with Littleton so that we can attract quality homeowners, quality businesses, and continue our trail into the future. Peggy, I sat on my front doorstep and put my confidence in you, and here we are. I'm very, very, very saddened. At any rate, moving forward, I just hope that we can mend our differences. I would love to see Michael Penny get his job back because I think he did more for this city in the last four or five years, what, five years that he's been our city manager, and I don't know what we're going to do here, but it's very, very sad to me. It's an emotional plea. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Jeannie Erickson, followed by Chuck Reed.
Good evening, council. Jeannie Erickson, I live in District 1. Regarding 5A, voting to dismantle lift, I think that's a wonderful idea. I think it is an appropriate decision to dismantle urban renewal in the city of Littleton. Since we do not have anyone applying for any projects, I see no reason why it would hurt anything. It does not seem like it's doing what the former city manager expected it to do. Littleton is developing on its own without siphoning money to give to developers. Let's give our tax dollars to schools, our city, our county, urban drainage, South Suburban, and our parks where it's needed to keep our community vibrant. And I'm here tonight with my own letter of confidence, speaking to the four members of city council who made a very hard decision two weeks ago. I could tell it was not an easy decision, but I completely trust your decision and in your courage to do so. I know that you have our best interests in mind of the Littleton residents when deciding to make such a tough and controversial decision. I hope this will lead to a needed transparency in our city government and that city business will take place in public view, not in one-on-one meetings among only a few chosen members of council. The Littleton Charter needs to be followed, and zoning rules and codes need to be upheld also to protect what is important to the citizens of Littleton. My wish for the city is to grow in a way that will make our future generations proud of the important decisions that were made regarding protecting what we have and building responsibly for the future. I am not against development. I am completely for Littleton growing in a positive way, respecting the codes and rules that have made us what we are today. Let us grow responsibly with integrity for what is being built. Let us have higher standards than what is being built around us. Let us have the choice to be better and, yes, to be the best. I am not silent because Littleton matters to me.
Thank you, Chuck Reed, followed by John Watson.
Good evening, council. My name is Chuck Reed. I live at 628 West Easter Place. I'm here to ask you this evening and right now to remove 5A from the consent agenda and would request that motion from one of you. Urban renewal is a tool in your toolkit, and last fall, there was a very strong message sent from the voters about voter approval of use of that tool. It's important to keep that tool in your toolkit, and clearly, it's important to have more information to learn how to best use- to learn how to best use that. But abandoning or throwing away the tool could prove in the future to be detrimental when the time and situation arises where you wish you had that tool in your toolkit. And so I would request a specific vote and a separate vote as opposed to having that as part of the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, John Watson, followed by Carol Briesjak.
Good evening, council, staff, fellow taxpayers. I'm here tonight on behalf of Al and myself to express our confidence in the city council majority. Thank you for your vote. I know it was difficult. I know it was studied. I know it took a lot of time to get to that conclusion, but we agree with it. And the constituents that we work with in District 4 agree with it as well. We are not in favor of corporate welfare or having to buy developments. I saw the development plans on the building department desk as I was walking in. There are mounds of plans there without having to subsidize anyone. We don't have to do that. The city of Littleton is too well-developed, has limited parcels for development to go giving away funds to Breckenridge Brewery, which is Budweiser. I've got 1,000 Facebook friends, but I'm not going to read them to you and they feel the same way. We need to support Littleton's essential public services. We don't need to pick and choose developers. We don't need urban renewal to blight the entire city and make mistakes on what's ag land and what's not and miscount acreage and have the Arapico County District Court tell us that we're wrong. I'm not proud of that. I'll tell you that. I'm not proud of decisions that are made in a closed room by staff with citizens not getting to input. You talk about lack of transparency. It's only here with the majority that I get transparency and find out what's going on with the city. And we pay attention. I haven't seen a lot of people coming in before, but we come in, we watch, we see what's going on, and we think you made the right decision. It's necessary. We have to progress as the city of Littleton if we're going to have progress. We have to do it with the city infrastructure, not subsidizing specific developers or blighting the entire city. I think that's pointless. That conduct is what caused this to take place. It was a necessity. Everyone we deal with concurs with the city council majority. We want to tell you we have the greatest confidence in your decision. We respectfully suggest you do not reconsider your decision and respectfully suggest that Littleton's urban renewal plan, Lift, has outlived its usefulness. We can't afford another $20 million. We couldn't afford the $400,000 we spent on Lift without getting a single developer in here or a single plan. So it's outlived its usefulness. If it's a tool, let's use it when we need it. I don't buy tools I don't need. Let's not do the same. Thank you for your attention.
Carol Briesjak.
I'm Carol Briesak. I live in the 4th district. I have read the petition signed by citizens opposed to the firing of Michael Penny. It's obvious that whoever wrote the petition knows very little about the Sunshine Boys, that they have tried to marginalize as the cause of all that is bad in Littleton. Littleton Awake has missed the target. Sunshine is a group of citizens that meets once a week. We have council members from Sheridan and Inglewood that attend. All meetings are open to one and all and usually 30 to 40 people show up to talk about what's happening in Littleton. We collect food and necessities for the military reserves and we have assisted homeowners that are having difficulty maintaining their property. We show up and force to do what is needed to get them off the code enforcement watch list. There are no members, there are no dues, and there's only one rule. We only talk about local issues. That has been our success because we are a group of Republicans, Democrats, Libertarians, a John Birch and unaffiliated voters. Sunshine has been blamed for all that is bad, which is rather humorous since Sunshine does not take a position on issues. In fact, Sunshine has never been in front of this council advocating one way or the other on any issue since I started to attend the meetings in 2005. But there are several people that attend the meetings that do address council regularly. It's their right. Democracy is wonderful. I'm glad they take advantage of that opportunity. But since there were no specifics in the Littleton Awake petition, I can only guess at what they think Littleton is responsible for achieving. Did they get Sunshine mixed up with Citizens for Rational Development who sponsored 301, limiting executive sessions? 9,234 citizens agreed. Citizens for Rational Development sponsored 302 that requires a supermajority on certain zoning changes. 7,203 citizens agreed with them. Or Your Littleton Year Vote, the sponsored 300 that gives the voters the right to approve whether or not our tax dollars are diverted to urban renewal. In a special election, 5,755 citizens agreed with us. Or perhaps the Advocates for Littleton, which is another group that's suing the city for their lack of due process in the zoning of the Grove. Citizens have raised over $30,000 to advance the lawsuit. Could the claim go all the way back to the Walmart fight when 7,878 citizens overturned a council decision? What about Broadstone? Council didn't approve that. Does that mean you want to preserve the 1950s look? As an individual, I have expressed my concern over the interpretation of the subdivision exemption. Run out of time for that. But I am glad that we live in a country where the majority rules. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everyone that I have on our list. Is there somebody who did not get a chance to sign? Please.
Could I have the overhead opaque projector? A little brighter and clearer perhaps? Or what should I do?
Just leave it there. See if you can adjust it up there.
Okay, here we go. Okay, Frank Atwood, 7094 South Castilla Street. I'm into message t-shirts. The current t-shirt says, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed people can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has." Margaret Mead. With regards to Sunshine, the credo I use is transparency, accountability, consequences. I also feel this evening, unchallenged perception becomes reality. I'm confident that the majority of this council welcomes reality. I do expect the majority of this city council to not be complicit in silencing citizen comments. This is a repeat of what you heard from me back in September last year. I'd be curious about the critics. Have, did they actually watch the meeting? And especially this evening's readers. Could I poll them?
Frank, that's inappropriate. You're not.
Apparently not. Okay. I apologize. Julie, Frank, Sally, Karen, Dana, and Pat. I'd like to believe that you did watch the meeting, but no way to know at this point. Also, there's been concern that former council member Randy Stein was recalled. Effort was organized, I believe, by Greg and Hoodlum, if there was a recall effort. I'd like to thank Littleton citizens for passing 302, opening executive session initiatives. And I'll conclude with, how was Jim Woods, city manager for City 20 years? My answer is, he was always counting where the four votes were. Now, I think I have a little bit more time, so I'd like to use this time as an opportunity to extend an open invitation to anyone and everyone and especially phone calls to Bill Hopping that I haven't been returned to, to invite them to Sunshine meetings. And if you're interested in details, please do call me at 720-260-1493. I appreciate this opportunity and look forward to hearing if your critics have actually watched the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? At the top there. Sorry, I'll just point. Please.
Okay, I hope I'm going to be talking practically. I would recommend that you.
Can you give us your name, please?
Pardon?
Your name.
Oh, Linda Menke. In between the South Santa Fe urban renewal area and Santa Fe Mid Urban Renewal Area. See if we can pull this up. Didn't want to work. Give me a second. So don't undo a decision that has already been made by the council. First, you lose credibility from the electorate. And second, if you reinstated the city manager, he would not have the confidence of the council and not to mention the staff. And it's a really uncomfortable situation to be put in. You're also putting the employees of the city in an uncomfortable situation. And let me mention also with performance plans, they never, ever work for that level of position. Either he's working for you or he's not. Even questioning the decision is kind of weird to me. So would you want to get a job back in which you have been removed from? Have you received consent from him to pursue reinstating the position? Trust me, it is exceedingly difficult to regain credibility. What is done is done. Move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional folks who would like to speak? Pam?
Thanks, council. Regarding items 5D, ID 16132, which is the Chatfield Watershed Authority, and also 6A, 16135, about signs. Please continue those till later. There's enough to discuss tonight. The sign thing in particular, I went to that study session and did not hear the thing about the third party for the structures that are installed on Main Street. It was all about the Supreme Court's decision and so please continue that with more explanation. To go to the issue of Michael Penny's dismissal, please let that stand and thank you to the four of you who voted for it. Michael Penny was not a good manager. I'm going to say this. I'm old enough and I've had the kind of worked experience to be able to evaluate that. I have worked in well-managed projects and I'm going to say that in the context, by the way, congratulations to Juno for getting in orbit around Jupiter. And that's where I come from. So we have a lot of project managers, but they're all hundreds, if not thousands, of people. And to get that to work, I know what kind of project management I need to see and that was not Michael Penny. I know some of you want to believe that, but he wasn't a good manager. Just let it be behind us and let's find someone good. And then, council, I'm going to talk to you at the end about policy. So yes, you are a policy body. Let me say Michael Penny would bring ordinances to you that said, "Your policy decision is the same as the ordinance to the resolution." Is that absurd or what? It is. No, the policies that you need to decide on are housing policies, traffic policies, growth policies, infrastructure improvement and maintenance policies. And they need to be done over months. And then hand that to staff and let them implement it. That's how council-manager government works. So yeah, we need to move forward. We need to get rid of the bad manager. He just patted his resume, all those compliments that people referred to. Those were not meritorious recognitions. So finally, let me say, please abolish urban renewal. Do not be fearful that well-founded urban renewal will be turned down by the voters. But the areas are far too large for a city our size. If we were Denver, maybe. But for a city our size, we should pick one or two sites that are really problems and focus on them. And make your case and the voters will approve. Don't be fearful. Just get rid of the bad expression of urban renewal.
You're out of time, Pam.
Well, I have one second. Thanks, Wendy, for the red card. Five seconds early.
Any other speakers, please?
Hello. My name is Vanessa Menke. 14 years in District 4. Built several businesses in downtown Littleton. So very few people, I think, in here can attest to the same type of knowledge of everything that I get to see and do and people I get to meet and the city council I get to deal with and the city in itself. The first business I built was eight years ago. Eight years and three months and the city has changed immensely. It was a ghost town down here. And if anybody remembers that, there was not a car parked on Main Street. We didn't have parking issues. We had the family bought, I don't know. We had Old Town Tavern. We had a few little places that were around, but it was a ghost town. Now, Littleton is thriving. It is, you cannot get any parking space anywhere. And if you don't have a parking lot, you're kind of in trouble. It's amazing to see this. It's amazing to see my house appreciate, my neighbors build, my business thrive. And Michael Penny was a large part of that. Everything I've seen from him, he's cleaned up our streets. He's helped us. He's helped me personally. And all of you that is not part of that, you should have faith in him. I am not, I have not dealt with him on a day-to-day basis. I see the big picture. I see my business and I see my homes and I see Littleton growth. And as a 38-year-old woman, that is amazing in Littleton. It's amazing in Colorado. It's one of the best towns I've ever been part of and I'm so proud to have it here. And I do, I am, sorry, I am on your list. I was just, signed it a little late today. So I am part of that and I do, I do believe in reinstating him or at least giving him a chance.
Thank you. That completes my list and I didn't see anybody else. Marty?
Marty Bolt, District 2. Been here 53 years in Littleton. I think we're all here, we like Littleton. We have different perspectives on it on occasion. I worked in a company where when you got a recovery plan, you were standing on a banana peel and you had 30 days to shape up. But you were in trouble. It doesn't sound like somebody is doing a wonderful job when they get fired and now we're asking for a recovery. I would agree that it would be a huge mistake to reinstate the man that just left. This is an interesting position here, I think, on urban renewal as well. And I think it needs to be addressed slightly. We had a ballot issue 300, if you'll recall, and there was a big flap about it. There were 4,000 people, certified petitioners, dedicated and known to be voters and citizens of the city. And it was a lot of work to get those signatures. And they only wanted one thing and it was lacking in urban renewal. And that was the right to vote on what was being done to our city. We as citizens had no say. You could talk to the council perhaps, but you didn't really have a say. You couldn't do a thing about it. And that's unique. Nowhere in the fabric that, the way they've put urban renewal together, is there a way for the public to address the shenanigans that go on or whether they even want it? You just get it. And then you get somebody assigned to it who may not even be a known resident, even though they might be a resident, and they make all the decisions for you. I think that we should dump the whole thing and let things grow as they, as they may. Those, what happened is people were so interested in our right to vote, and mind you, our right to vote, that $73,000 was raised to kill our right to vote, 300. Can you imagine that? And the money came from out of state by real estate, mostly real estate. They kicked in $45,000. And besides that, the other developers and so forth and real estate people kicked in enough that there was $73,000 that we were fighting. enough that there was $73,000 that we were fighting. And the citizens voted for their right to vote by a 60% vote. So, there's nothing wonderful about urban renewal, or the people who are pushing it all the time, when you have to go out of state to get the money to try and—
Marty, you're out of time.
—and try to kill us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your four majority.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Could we get the thermostat warmed up just a little bit, please?
No?
Are you hot? What a sweet spot. It's blowing right on me.
Can you borrow your jacket?
Okay. Just a—thank you.
We could make room for you up here, Wendy.
Councilmember Clark, do you need one of those things that are in some of the new cars that have kind of warm your behind while you're sitting in the chair?
Yeah, push it.
That'd be great.
Is the court ready to start the time? Are you ready?
Hi.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sherri Chisholm, and I live at 6570 South Cedar Street. I want to go on record to show my support and confidence in regards to the decision that the council made to fire the city manager. I hear my fellow citizens speak about a loss of confidence, but I would caution them that to accept opinions or views of others without doing your own research is not only dangerous, but irresponsible. I suggest that everyone come to these meetings on a regular basis to learn firsthand what the issues are and make your own conclusions, as opposed to being handed your talking points by a handful of people that have ulterior motives that, in the end, may not end up aligning with your own principles. It wasn't until I just recently began coming to these meetings that I really began to understand what goes on in our beloved city. Any one of us could stand up here and read off a list of names, but what I want is for these people to actually learn firsthand what the issues are and what they mean to all of us. Until that happens, a list of faceless people mean nothing. Thank you, councilmembers Cole, Clark, Beckman, and Valdez, for your courage, and we stand behind you. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking around to see if there's any other folks who'd like to speak.
Don.
I'm sorry, I don't—okay, here we go.
Good evening, Council. Don Brunns, District 4. After hearing so many people say they didn't have a confidence in you, I thought I'd be remiss for not saying. Anyone that watched that meeting would have to say—if they watched it, they saw the pains the four majority took, to be fair. I wrote a letter to The Independent, which Kyle and friends published, and appreciate the fact that they did that. And I wanted to just say, it's really true. It's not an issue of work plan. It's a question of ethics. It's a question of the citizens' trust in how the city manager works. And I want to say, I have utmost confidence in the four of you that passed that vote. And you took pains. I saw it was a strain to do it, but you were absolutely right in doing it. And I appreciate very much your commitment to ethics and truth and not the secrecy and falsehood that you were confronting. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Any additional speakers? This brings us to Agenda Item 5, which is the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items may be adopted by a single motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any Consent Agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. 5A is Ordinance 03-2016. It's an ordinance abolishing the Littleton Invest for Tomorrow Urban Renewal Authority pursuant to CRS 3125115 (2) and repealing the city urban renewal plans. Paul?
Paul.
And I—who would be the person?
Phil.
Phil? Consent Agenda Item 5B is Resolution 32-2016. It's a resolution to approve the intergovernmental agreement regarding a 2016 grant of Arapahoe County Open Space Program funds for Runyon Elementary School playground renovations. 5C is Resolution 33-2016. It's a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement regarding a 2016 grant of Arapahoe County Open Space Program funds for Phase 1 river integration at Hudson Gardens. Item number 5D is ID 16-132. It's a request to table Resolution 31-2016 to the August 2 city council meeting approving the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement establishing the Chatfield Watershed Item number 5E is ID number 16-137. It's the certification of the June 7, 2016, regular meeting minutes. Paul? Consent Agenda Item 5F is ID 16-138. It's the certification of the June 14, 2016, special session meeting minutes. Paul?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Consent Agenda Items 5B, 5C, and 5D.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Consent Agenda Items 5B, C, and D. Ready to vote?
The vote is unanimous. The motion carries 7 to 0.
This brings us back to Consent Agenda Item 5A, which is the ordinance abolishing the Littleton Invest for Tomorrow Urban Renewal Authority pursuant to 3125115 (2) and repealing the city urban renewal plans. It was pulled by Councilmember Sernanik.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regard to this item, I did watch the study session that occurred last week, and it seemed that the recommendation that came from the—both the Lift Board and the Planning Board—was to at least consider retaining the Columbine Square Plan, the Littleton Boulevard Plan, and the North Broadway Plan. And as I recall from a number of the discussions, these are areas of emphasis that the city has in taking a look at this. I am not aware of other financing alternatives that have been settled upon for what public infrastructure might be needed, possibly in these areas, and was very interested in hearing the staff report and presentation on this before we even considered it.
Additional comments?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I think there might be a little bit of a misrepresentation on the agenda. This is actually a first reading. It is not an ordinance to approve or not approve it this evening. So, this is a first reading, which simply moves it to a public hearing, which is scheduled for July 19. So, moving this forward does not approve it. It just sends it to a public hearing and a second reading, which we have to do by law because it's an ordinance.
Additional comments?
I have a comment. It relates a little bit to what Councilmember Sernanik brought up. So, if we were approving an ordinance, we have a single-topic rule, where we only take one topic at a time on an ordinance. Charter allows us, when we're pulling and withdrawing, as we would be doing here, that we don't have to follow the single-topic rule. We can combine topics. And that's in Chapter—section 36 of the Charter, which does allow multiple subjects. But for clarity, and back to the issue of what we talked about at the study sessions, I think there was a lot of concern expressed by different council members specific to several pieces of this. So, I'm concerned that we have a multiple-subject, one-time ordinance, when I think the discussion is to a greater detail. Councilmember Sernanik mentions that there might be detailed discussion on selected of the four locations, and I think that's part of it. And then, the other is that it—in the same ordinance—it would abolish Lift and then also repeal the city urban renewal plans. And I think there was considerable discussion about, did Lift have value even if—even if one or more of those areas was abolished? So, I really want to suggest that we need to relook this a little bit, and I'm looking for council's thought process. As a minimum, I would say that—to bring—and it's—I don't think it's a good idea to try to legislate from the dais and rewrite ordinances. I think if they came back, at least as two ordinances, one, it would be to abolish Lift, so that could be discussed separately and voted on separately. And the other would be to perhaps abolish this—or repeal the city's urban renewal plans, and then that could possibly be a greater discussion about one more—more than more. I think that's a better way to go. So—and then, the final comment that I have is, part of the legislative information, the council—the communication that came with this talks about the debt that Lift has, and it lists what the debt is, and that one of the options is for council to forgive the debt. I'm not comfortable in forgiving a debt that I don't get a full accountability for. At one time, it was discussed—it was a decision made earlier in the process that the Lift wasn't going to be audited because of whatever the reasons were at the time. But I'm not looking to audit it. I'm just trying to get a factual statement of what the expenditures were for the—for the debt that we would forgive, because I think that's the only prudent thing that council should do, looking out for taxpayer funds. So, I'm not—I'm not ready to pass this, but I'm also looking for a solution for perhaps a better way to discuss this. So, those are my comments, and I don't have a motion at this point. My vote would be not to send it forward, but my real intent is, we need a better discussion for council.
Mayor Beckman, it sounds as though you've got some issues with us coming forward. Mr. Sernanik has expressed that. I've got some issues with it as well. I don't think we're finished with this. It's a major move to get rid of urban renewal. And I know some people feel very passionately about it one way and passionately the other, but it sounds like there's still meat on the table here. We had two study sessions. Both Lift and Planning Board had a lot of input in that. They had some very positive things to say. And despite what Mr. Atwood says, I have been to two Sunshine Meetings, community conversations. I have a day job. I can't go to day meetings. But the—there were guests there who spoke about urban renewal, and they spoke about some of the hair on it because of the complexity of it, and I think we need to fully understand that. I'm not sure whether they—they also spoke of some of the benefits of it. So, I think—I would move we postpone it. I'm going to use the term indefinitely until we can get satisfied that we have the information to make a decision, a proper decision on this, and that move forward at that time.
You have a motion, then, at this point?
I thought I made a motion. I'm sorry.
Just if you'd say it again, postpone indefinitely?
I move that we postpone Ordinance 5A, an ordinance abolishing Littleton Invest for Tomorrow Urban Renewal Authority pursuant to CRS 31-25-115 (2) and repealing the city's urban renewal plans pending further study by council. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Hang on. Perhaps I had a brain fart for a second. I thought you said you were going to postpone indefinitely, and then I thought you said that you were postponing, awaiting for further study by the council. So, did I confuse the two?
Well, we postponed it indefinitely, but the purpose is to have further study by You can drop the last phrase if you'd like, if that makes it more clear.
I'm okay.
Phil?
Just with this, typically, when we do get a staff report, it will be—it will include some comments that would come from the referring bodies and our boards and commissions and that, and that's not yet been included here. And as the mayor had mentioned, lumping everything together may not be something that's consistent with some of the other priority items that we have, and I would like to at least be in a position of hearing what some of the possibilities might be, knowing that, in some instances, it takes five or more years before projects start to bubble up relative to urban renewal and as far as development in the—in the area. So, I think we may be one of these where lumping it all together is something that's not as thoughtful as I think we should be.
Yeah. I'd like us to set a date by which we get some discussion and answers, including cost. I mean, just even cost and a holding pattern, because I'm assuming there might be some, but I don't know that. So, we are beginning of July. I would like us, by the end of September, to have had one or two study sessions, because we may need to ask a set of questions in one and then follow up in another, where we get the answers to the questions that we're tap dancing around. I think we're tap dancing. Maybe we're ice skating. I don't know. But there are clearly some questions that several of us have, and I think answers would help us.
So, am I viewing that as an amendment to—
Yes.
So, we have a suggested amendment for a date certain rather than indefinitely, and I don't have a calendar in front of me, but by the end of September?
27th is your next study session.
Can't hear.
27th is your next—
26th. 20—I have September 27th, next study session.
Well, I think what we want to do is postpone it to a date of a regular meeting. Is that what I understood, Peggy?
If it was the end of September, next regular meeting would be October 4.
Okay.
But—
So—
Did August disappear? I believe Councilmember Cole said the end of September. Was that—
Yeah, but—
Oh.
But having meetings before that to bring it back to us—
Mm-hmm.
—by late September, or if you're saying, beginning of October, depending on what's available.
I understood the question was a date certain question. So, the—to hit the schedule that you're looking at, your next regular meeting then would be September—October 4. But throughout there, we can add in study sessions as well, correct?
So, we don't have any regular meetings in September?
You have budget hearings on the 19th, 20th, and 21st. That would be your second regular meeting in September. 20—
And you had said the end of September.
Yeah. So, anyway, either our second meeting, September, our first meeting, October. It'll come back to us, and in the meantime, we have study sessions. Is that—
Peggy, could you restate that, just to make sure that I understand? You want to do a first—a first reading in—this—is the first reading. So, we're going to post by your amendment—
Yes. Postpone this meeting to a date certain, which you're saying would be—
October 4. Your second regular meeting in September is currently scheduled as a budget meeting.
Okay.
Council budget.
So, and then, in the meantime, have study session discussion that we get it—the—get the information we want in preparation for that meeting that we're postponing this to.
So, I think we have clarity on what the amendment would be. The original motion was a motion to postpone indefinitely. The amended motion is to a date certain, which is the first reading, which is what we're postponing from tonight of October 4.
I'll second that.
And it is a motion and a second. Any other discussion? And then, we would vote on the amendment, which would become—
The main motion.
—would become the main motion.
Would become the main motion then, at that point?
So we're voting on the amendment now?
Yep. Yes. Voting on the amendment, and again, clarity is the amendment to go to a date certain, October 4th, for first reading.
The vote, wait, we don't have all, there. The vote is six in favor with Councilmember Hopping voting no. Motion carries six to one.
So at this point, there's no further motion on the floor on ordinance, on the discussion of this ordinance? No additional discussion?
But I think summarizing some of the points that were made, which is having additional detail rather than lumping everything together, making sure that the staff report includes our referring bodies on this, and having an understanding of that, and that we would have at least an expectation of more than one study session opportunity to address this. Is that right, Peggy?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, one thing that I think would be helpful for staff, because you've expressed some questions about urban renewal tonight, you will probably think of more when you get home over the next few days. If, it might be helpful for council to maybe submit through the city manager before the study session, a list of your questions that you would like answered about urban renewal, which can then go to Mr. Hoffman, and he can present a memo to the council, which would give you something in writing that hopefully would begin to address your questions, so that when you get to that first study session, you will already have made progress towards getting those questions answered and can ask the follow-up questions that you need to at the time.
I see council nodding their heads. Let me check my agenda here. Any other discussions? Okay, this brings us to Agenda Item E, which was the certification of the June 7, 2016 regular meeting minutes that was pulled by Councilmember Clark.
I'm voting no.
We never voted on it.
Move to approve based on?
Mr. Mayor? Yes.
We're sitting here wondering if you actually voted on the main vote?
They didn't. They didn't need the main motion, because that, this one took over the main motion.
Our feeling was up here that when we amended from a indefinite to a date certain, that replaced the original motion. And then by voting on it, we did not have to vote further. If you see differently, we can vote, we can vote again back to the main motion. Again, it would be the same wording.
I guess in my practice, a motion to amend changes the main motion. The motion to amend passed, which made that now a substantive part of the main motion, but that a vote on the main motion would still be required.
I'm comfortable doing it that way, if that's what you want. Let me find my notes again. Back to the main motion, it's a motion to postpone for first reading to October 4th, 2016. And that is for, let me get clarity, for ordinance 3-2016, the ordinance abolishing Littleton Invest for Tomorrow Urban Renewal Authority pursuant to 31-25-115, parentheses 2, and repealing the city urban renewal plans. And it has been seconded. Are you ready to vote?
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. That brings us to E, which is, again, was pulled by Councilmember Clark. And then we now have a motion and a second to proceed with a vote on that. Any discussion? Do you vote?
This is E?
So yes, or is the approve? Yeah, okay. This is to approve?
There's no motion made.
We have a certific? You're right. Somebody made the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'll move to approve 5E. I move to approve based on the recording secretary's certification. The June 7 video has the minutes for the June 7, 2016, regular meeting of the city council. Second.
Second, okay. Let's get back on track here.
Councilmember Cole, you need to vote, please. The vote is six in favor with Councilmember Clark voting no. The motion carries six to one.
Okay, let's, take us to F, which is ID 16-138, the certification of the June 14, 2016 special session minutes. That was pulled by Councilmember Clark.
Move to approve based on the recording secretary's certification, the June 14, 2016 video is the minutes for the June 14, 2016 special section, session, meeting of the city council.
We have a second?
Second.
Question?
Question.
For the city clerk, the audio and the visual did not work on Channel 8? I know it did streaming, kind of. Did we get that technical issue squared away?
Yes, I think they took care of all of the issues that we had. And I did watch the meeting, and what was recorded or came through online, came through clear.
Okay.
So what I've got in the archives is what was clear.
All right, thank you.
Ready to vote?
The vote is six in favor with Councilmember Clark voting no. The motion carries six to one.
Okay, that completes the consent agenda. Brings us to Agenda Item 6, which is ordinance for second, ordinances for second reading and public hearing. And the request was made for Agenda Item 6A, which is ID number 135, to continue that public hearing and second reading of ordinance 7, which would amend Chapter 3 of Title 4 and Chapter 20 of Title 3 of the City Code concerning the regulation of signs. And that was to move it to a date certain, which would be July 19, 2016, at the regular meeting of the city council. Staff, would you like to discuss that for us?
We would like to postpone it, and, but we need you to open the public hearing. We just want to do some more legal work on it. It needs to be reviewed by the legal team again. And so we've got it set up for July 19, but I need you to open the public hearing so that we can continue it to July 19.
Will we be taking testimony for the public hearing?
No, you just open the public hearing, and then someone could move to continue it if that's council's pleasure.
Okay.
Why can't we just postpone it?
Because it was scheduled?
Because it's scheduled as a public hearing tonight. And so we need to open the public hearing and then continue it.
Any other concerns about the process being asked? I'm seeing agreement with the counselor? Okay, discussion.
This is all over the signs that the city approved for Main Street area that don't meet City Code, as it turns out. Is that correct? This is regarding both the constitutional and Supreme Court issue, as well as the clarification on the downtown signage, correct? It's not all the signs, it's specifically those blade? Those new ones that we just bought, right? And they don't meet code, is that correct? There's clarification whether or not they meet code. And so this? So they don't meet code? Otherwise, we'd have signs of? Sure. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, so for clarity, staff has asked that we continue the public hearing and second reading, but is asking us to open a public hearing. If we open the public hearing tonight, that doesn't preclude a public hearing at the time of the date certain, correct? We're not taking any opportunity, and the citizens don't lose an opportunity to speak.
I'm sorry, you said that we're going to repost it?
We will repost it for the, for the second reading.
July 19?
For July 19.
Okay, based on the guidance from the clerk, deputy, and the counselor, I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:56 in the evening. Do I have a motion?
I'm prepared to make motion, but I want to ask one quick question. Did we take any sign up this evening? Is there anyone here to?
I didn't put a sheet out, because I knew that we were going to postpone it.
I just didn't know if someone was here.
And they will all have the opportunity to speak on second reading.
I know, but based on community. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Why don't you check and see if there's anybody that's here that wants to speak about this, and then make a decision on what we want to do? Because they may not be able to come back on the 19th.
I can't be here on the 19th, and I have my statement prepared.
So I'd like to do that. I'd like to have a public hearing this evening, and then, and as you understand the process, we're trying to get it to continue to a date certain, which will be another public hearing. But let's hear from any of the public that can't, is not available. So please raise your hands, because I don't have a sign up sheet. We're opening, the public hearing has been opened, and this is in regards to Item 6A on the agenda. So Jeannie, go ahead.
Thank you, City Council, Jeannie Erickson, District 1. I'm here to speak about the signage for downtown. Hopefully in the future, our new city manager and city staff can read the City Code before putting up new signs that are currently illegal, so that the City Codes don't have to be changed after the fact to make them legal. I also wanted to mention, I don't believe these new signs match our historic downtown. They are much too modern looking, and it would have been nice to have seen the Downtown Merchants and the Historic, Historical Preservation Board get together, collaborate their ideas as to what would be appropriate for downtown Littleton. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Don't see any.
Not seeing any one. Mr. Chairman, I move to continue the public hearing and second reading for ordinance 7, which would amend Chapter 3 of Title 4 and Chapter 20 of Title 3 of the City Code concerning the regulation of signs to the July 19, 2016, regular city council meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote?
Not that it makes a difference.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
It's eight o'clock, we've been at this for an hour and a half. I'd like to go ahead and take a break for, let's make it 10 minutes, please.
The fireplace?
Yeah.
Go do some jumping.
Go do some jumping.
Okay, we've returned from our break. It's 8:10. This brings us on the agenda to item seven, general business. There are three items there, A, B, and C. Item A is ID 16-139. It's interim city manager discussion appointment and authorization for the city attorney to draft an interim city manager employment contract. And these are just discussion items, although there may be a need for a vote. That's why it's not done during the regular session, so that we can pass a resolution if necessary. Just to bring people up to date, in the charter, there's an area called Section 50 and that's what we're proceeding in terms of. That's the guiding principles of dealing with the issues that we're at with a deputy city manager filling in at this time and the need to have an acting city manager appointed. Right now, the staff succession plan has the deputy city manager filling in in the absence of the city manager. That was a charter requirement that anytime the charter, the actual managers away from the office, there is somebody else who is appointed to fill in in that space and that's what's been happening. Mike Bratton's been doing that and he's been doing a great job. Thank you very much, Mike. The second part of that is, in the event the city manager position becomes vacant, then the council by resolution may appoint an acting city manager for a period of not more than a year. So that's where we find ourselves now and we just need to have a discussion among council as to how to proceed and a discussion with Mike representing his own interests and the interest of where the staff's at. So, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mike Bratton, Deputy City Manager. Per the discussion at the study session on the 28th, it was requested that I approach the executive team and talk about possible candidates for the acting city manager role. We met last week and we would like to bring forward Mark Ralph, our Public Works Director, as the unanimous selection from the executive team.
And Mike, just so the crowd all knows and everyone's aware, you had felt very strongly that you were doing a job right now that you wanted to continue to do as the deputy city manager and that there would be some great validity to you continuing to do those projects and that were you to be removed from those to do the interim or acting job as manager, some of those would suffer. You just can't do, can't do it all.
Exactly.
If you could talk about that.
I like being the deputy director, or the deputy city manager. It's where my, it's my forte, supporting a manager has always been kind of what I've done and it's what I really signed up for and what I want to do. So at this time in my, my career, this is where I want to be.
Okay. So council, that's, that's the information that Mike brings to us is that he wants to continue in that deputy city manager job and that Mark Ralph has the support of the senior staff in the city and Mark has also expressed a willingness to do that job. And he expressed that to me because I called him and asked exactly where he stood and I know others on council have talked with him also. So that's, that's what I think is what we have in front of us. I believe that we need to vote to agree that Mark would be our choice and then I believe we also need to look at a couple of issues. One is, should we agree that, that we do that, or whoever we were to agree to do that, they have to have a contract with council. So that's how that would work. A contract would be established and part of, certainly part of that would, I think should be, and it's for council discussion, is what's called a rollback provision so that as he proceeds down the path of doing the acting job, should we go through a selection process and should we find someone else to fill that position, he has guaranteed in his contract the ability to roll back and be the department head that he is today. I think that's extremely fair and appropriate, but we need to agree on that as a council and talk about it. And then the other part is that a salary needs to be determined and I honestly am not really equipped right now to talk about that. However, it would be appropriate to have a salary in that contract. It's an obligation and the salary would have to be reflective of the job that we're asking him to do and I'm not sure what that would be. So with that, I'd like to open discussion on council to those issues and also possibly to our, our acting city attorney, Councilman Foulman, if there's any other issues. So, council?
I do have one question. Well, I probably have several, but one for starters. What will happen to your department, his department? Because that's not, if he can do the one job and his department doesn't need him, that's making a loud statement.
I'll allow Mark to answer that.
I'm not ready to have that question answered yet. I'm very concerned to take someone who is the head of a department that is key for some of our priorities, dealing with infrastructure and transportation, and to somehow put additional burden on them. I also have some questions because we still have a number of folks here that had questions about the Grove project that is as yet unresolved and my understanding as the Public Works Director also was involved in some discretionary decisions on that front and would not want to put us in a position where those items are there. And I'd like to be in a position to interview, if we, if we say it's going to be among the director corps, more than one candidate because in the past, as we've only looked at one candidate, that hasn't necessarily worked well. And what I'd like to see is maybe someone who's been through the wringer as far as being very aware of what's going on in the community over a longer period of time and would want to look at someone that's possibly been outside of some of the politics that have existed inside city center. And so I might want to also be in a position to have some discussion with, say, Tim Nims as someone who is very familiar with the, with the process and be in a position to do that and that we actually have an interview. It doesn't have to be a long period of time, but in a position where we can actually ask the questions. It's not discounting the department directors and their opinion, but as we've gone through this, it's our direct report and would like to be in a position where we have a chance to make our own decision.
Other comments?
Did Peggy have a question though?
Well, I didn't get an answer to my question, so I'm assuming maybe now somebody could, he could answer my question.
I guess they say the, one of the true tests of a leader is to be able to make your job so, your department so efficient that they don't need you any longer. Unfortunately, that is not the case. I think in this particular, as an interim, you know, I would have a challenge with Public Works. I think on the operations side, you know, I have, I would probably look to one of my internal managers to probably lead the, in effect, the operations. I don't necessarily have the concerns there that I would with, say, engineering. As I've told the council already, I've had a challenge in recruiting a city engineer and I'm working with HR right now to actually do the fourth recruitment for the city engineer. I do have contracts in place to manage not only the, kind of the day-to-day activities of the city engineer, but also a lot of the other goals and objectives that the council has expressed to me by contract. And so I'm confident, quite honestly, that I can manage not only the functions of Public Works and I would have to stay in touch on some regular basis with that, but also I'd be able to be in a position to take on the rest of the responsibilities that the interim really would demand. And so I'm pretty confident that I would be able to manage that.
Thank you.
Hold on to any other questions council might have. Go ahead.
So when we're talking about an interim, does that mean that there's not, that we're not going to do a search for a permanent? Because if we do a contract of some level with Mark, I would assume we are doing that to fill a key position in the city and that when we talked about doing a search, we were looking at anywhere from probably a minimum of six months to possibly nine months, depending on how that search went. So I understand the importance of having someone in that position, but if it's in, if this is in lieu of a larger search, then I think we need to have a conversation about that.
So this is not in lieu of the search. Let me, let me go to the charter section here that I think applies to what we're talking Section 50, I'll just read the whole thing. "The city manager shall designate immediately on his or her appointment a qualified city employee to perform his or her duties during his or her temporary absence or disability. Such designation shall be made by letter and filed with a city clerk." So that's in essence what we're talking about with the deputy city manager's position right now. This doesn't apply, but if he or she fails to make such designation, the council may by resolution appoint a qualified city employee to perform the duties of manager until he or she shall return. This does apply. "In the event that the position of city manager becomes vacant, the council may appoint an acting manager for not more than one year." And that's where we are today. This would be the acting manager position appointed by council based on the fact that the position is vacant, so we're obligated to do it. But meanwhile, we have Eric in HR working on the process for recruiting a full-time city manager.
And this goes with the plan that we talked about last Tuesday.
I think this was all what was discussed at the, at the study session. I don't think there's anything different in there. Eric has been sending out, he sent out today a draft RFP and was looking for any other council opinions or edits on that and that he has in it, has an amended timetable, which is a tentative timetable, but it was based on the discussion at the study session last week and it's been amended a little bit to fit regular meetings so that we could make motions and vote if we needed to on any of it. But this is all a planning document. It's not, certainly not in concrete, but the intent would be to continue to move ahead toward a search.
Phil, what's your proposal?
I'd like to at least see an interview process with more than one candidate from director positions, if that's the ones that we think are most qualified.
Candidates from director position in the city currently?
Directors within the?
The city currently?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless someone has other suggestions, but I think that way we have someone who is familiar with the budget process. That's important. I'd like to find someone who doesn't have large budget items. That would be somewhat controversial, recognizing that everyone is controversial, but particularly when we're looking at dealing with some of our transportation and infrastructure pieces, Mark has outlined some very large items and we don't know how we're going to pay for those yet. And so I have a concern on that front. He may be the best qualified person, but I think we ought to at least be in a position to consider others and given that we have a yet unresolved court case, to have someone who had some discretionary authority involved in that gives me some cause, pause. Excuse me. Bruce?
Sure.
Could I ask, Mike, was there anyone else on the senior staff that would have had any interest at all in taking this?
Thank you. I asked twice. No.
Kind of wraps it up, I think, doesn't it?
And just to add to the discussion, there, there is another alternative that I have found, but I, I personally didn't support it and it's just out there. It's been out there for a very long time and that is, there are circuit rider city managers that make their career and make their, their living by coming to cities for a period of time and leaving and perhaps handling several cities at the same time or whatever. My concern was, and this was just that, breaking somebody, it reflects some of the issues that were just said, breaking somebody into the city issues, breaking them into what are the budget issues and those kinds of things, I think is a pretty major task. And based on the presentations that Mark has made to council, I think he's pretty in tune with issues of priorities and budgets. So I felt like he So I felt like he, that any of the current members of the city would probably be far along on that because, again, we're only talking about a period of months in an acting role.
Well, I do have, I do have some concerns. I think that Mark is great. He has served as our Public Works Director for, I'm not sure even if it's been quite a year or just slightly, around a year. I'd swip, just over. And I'm real concerned about the juggle between both jobs. I think that they're both huge jobs, particularly given the current situation that we have. And the Public Works, all the work that is being done in that department right now is being guided by Mark. So pulling him off of some of that, dividing up workload, pushing things around, I'm not certain that that's going to be in the best interest. I would, I would think it would be a good idea. We've got 10 directors and basically nobody but Mark wanted to do it. That's, I'm not, I'm not as comfortable saying, oh, okay, why not? Go ahead, you can do it. It's a big job. It's a huge job. It's a job that touches all the departments. It's a job that runs the morale for 450 employees. There's a great deal to know. There's a depth and breadth that a city manager brings to a job, a professional city manager. That is very important. So I would be a lot more comfortable if we were to reach out with a search for one of these interim city managers. I think they would have a, bring in a few of those and interview those. I just think it would be, we need to have some more options and some more choices. We have, in the past, not done that and just moved someone in, and that's seldom worked out well. So I would, I'd like to see some more options.
I'm okay with this move. It was part of our discussion last week, not by name, but on how do we handle this situation? This keeps Eric moving. This does, I don't think this affects Eric in any, or HR in any way, but I'm okay with doing this. I think he does know the department. He, as the city, acting city manager, does need to know what's going on in that department and makes him ideal for that role. So I would support this move.
Further discussion? Peggy?
Yeah, so if I remember correctly, Mark, you're one of the staff and particularly Department Chair that had significant experience in the problem identification training that council had less than a year ago, I think. I think there's great value in that. So I have a related question. Would it be of any benefit to hire someone who maybe knows a lot about what you currently do, I mean, what your department currently does, to fill in there so that we'd be sure that we're not overloading you?
Councilmember Cole, I've given this a lot of thought since the mayor kind of reached out and talked to me a little bit about it. Again, I'm real confident on the field operations side. You know, we do a lot of good work. Those men, women, they know their business. Yes, there are issues that I'll need to stay in touch with. In fact, one of which we'll probably talk during the budget process, no plowing, quite honestly. It's the engineering side that I think that I have kind of struggled with trying to find a long-term solution here as our acting, or city engineer. I do not believe I need to add any more to the operation in order for me to be effective at the interim, as well as managing the issues within the Public Works Department. I have a very capable contract city engineer who sits there now. I have other contracts in place to kind of manage the, quite honestly, the high development review piece that's going on. I have engineers kind of managing some of the operations within the sewer utility. I even have a RFP out right now, looking for an engineer to kind of step in and actually perform a lot of the pavement analysis that we've been talking with council about so that we are prepared ultimately to kind of act on whatever direction you set here for our pavement preservation strategy. So again, I believe I have the pieces in place. I do not need to add any more. I think that, again, based on kind of my time that I have been here, about 14 months, I believe that, you know, it's, it's not necessarily going to be an easy task, that's for sure, but I believe I'm in a position to probably make it work.
Thank you.
Mark, could you take a moment just to tell us your background? Not everybody's familiar with the path that you followed before you came here.
Well, let's see. I, I've been in this business for nearly 30 years. I have spent most of my career on the Western Slope. I was the Public Works City Utilities Director for the City of Grand Junction for nearly 16 years. I spent the last almost nine years working for the City of Shoreline, Washington. How I moved from Grand Junction to Washington's an interesting story, but I tell you, it added a piece of my background that was invaluable. Councilmember Cole kind of touched on, you know, a piece of training that I have been kind of dedicated to most of my career. I think a lot of the success, and I've had, in my opinion, some pretty great success with the projects. One example is the City of Grand Junction. At the time, we completed probably the largest public works project financed entirely by a city in the state of Colorado, supported by a public vote. I was hired specifically by the City of Shoreline to actually negotiate the water utility from the City of Seattle and create our own water utility approved by the citizens of the City of Shoreline. I've learned that it's not necessarily me, it's public engagement, it's listening. And I think that the training that we've had here some months ago, quite honestly, I attribute my success to those principles. And I basically enjoy this work because of those principles, to be honest. I think it is the interaction with the community that I enjoy, and quite honestly, that's why I'm here. The City of Littleton is a, as we all know, second-best small city in the country. And I think it is a fantastic community, and I would be honored to be the interim city manager.
Can we ask him questions?
Sure. I think that's what we need to do.
Mark, what's your background and experience? We have police association and fire association, contract negotiations coming up. What's been your experience working with those groups?
I have had a pretty extensive throughout my career working with police and fire on a very, you know, series of issues. Probably the most relevant experience was working for the City of Shoreline. As most of you perhaps know, Washington is a union state for public employees, and the City of Shoreline was the largest city in the state that was not union. And that was by design and certainly by the support of the employees. So my interaction with unions, while not necessarily directly, certainly was pretty extensive in trying to maintain a, an employee morale issue, a culture that did not want to bring in the unions. And it was largely because of the interaction between management and the employees themselves. Again, a pretty unique experience in a union environment, or could have been union, and it was almost a daily issue that we had to make sure that our interaction with our employees was pretty straightforward and pretty solid.
Any other discussion or questions for Mark?
Not at this time.
If I may, council, I obviously would support any decision that you make, and I realize that it is a tough decision. And so wherever this goes, believe me, I'm going to be the first there in line to support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug, you, I think you would wave in your hand first.
I'm just contemplating. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. I was just going to say that I, one thing we need to consider is shock to staff because when you change leaders, there's always a little bit of floundering until you get rerouted. I think doing this internally would settle that situation more quickly than bringing someone in from outside and then hiring another person as a long-term manager. In the time I've spent with Mark, through our training that we all went through together, I was impressed with his knowledge of that and the way he applies it, and I think he has very good interpersonal skills that could come to play with us. And if he's confident that he can, can handle both departments, I'm concerned also about the Public Works side because that's one of our, as our survey showed, that's one of the areas that our citizens are most concerned about. We need to have our roads taken care of and such, but I think Mark's very capable. He has the endorsement of staff, and staff is going to be very impacted by this. If council's comfortable working with Mark, I certainly would heartily endorse him for this.
Diddle?
My comment remains the same, as I did not come tonight. We didn't have an interview of potential candidates for interim city manager, and there was no description included here. And I'd like to have an opportunity to actually conduct an interview and hear what Mark's plans are, as well as anyone else that might want to be in a position to have that discussion. I agree that to the extent that we are limiting ourselves to one option, that hasn't worked well in the past, and would like to see us be in a position to look at that, whether it's a circuit rider and being able to toss that out of hand. But I know that there's some folks that are actually familiar with the city that do serve as circuit riders, so they wouldn't necessarily be coming in blind either.
I agree with Phil. You mentioned mayor, that you have had a conversation with Mark. I don't know if other council members have had meetings or interviews or some such thing. I certainly have not. And I'm not prepared tonight to make a decision based on simply my experience with Mark as a public works director, which I think he has done a good job, but I think this is a much bigger job than that. I'm real concerned about the idea that you can split yourself between the two, particularly given the fact that you don't have an engineer, an engineering guy over there yet. So, and I also find it kind of fascinating that Mark, one of the reasons there was such angst over the Grove was what issues with what staff had done and what they hadn't done and some criticism, some extreme criticism of the city manager while a public works director sat in the same meeting I sat in, explaining all of those same processes. So if we get rid of one city manager for those things, but we hire the next or bring in a next interim based on, you know, him agreeing with some of those same things, I'm seeing a little bit of a conflict there in terms of what council really wants, what their real direction is. And I think we need to, I would feel more comfortable with an interview, and I would also feel more comfortable if we did open up to get some, as Phil calls them, circuit riders, excuse me, circuit riders through here. I don't know, I can't imagine it would take that long, a couple of weeks, to get some interviews set up. These guys are looking for work. But I feel a lot more comfortable if we spend a little bit more time doing that. This is a very important job, and even if it's only for a year, it, or less, a lot can happen any year.
I'm not comfortable with going outside and whether to get a circuit rider, then we're doing another interview process, which, for somebody that's temporary, that we're then going to go through another interview process, for somebody that's permanent, I generally think that it's our responsibility to interview candidates, be they judges or interim city managers or things like this. But given the fact that there's only one that is volunteered to step forward, I think that this is the appropriate action to take. Any department head is going to have a problem with juggling the interim duties along with the department that they currently have, be that Tim Nims or anybody that we have. So this is an interim spot. Hopefully, we're looking at six to nine months. I think that with the help of Mike, that we should be able to get through this period. And I'm willing to go with Mark.
And just to give context to this discussion, we're not allowed to have this discussion in an executive session. The city charter is very specific now that this is not the kind of discussion that is allowed in an executive session. Other cities might be making this kind of discussion and choice behind closed doors, but we don't. So that's why you're listening to the discussion. Any other thoughts, any other concerns? Well, in order for us to proceed, what we need to do is probably have a vote, but again, just to talk about the process, the city attorney can develop a contract that fits the needs of the requirement, discusses that issue of a rollback, and puts the salary in there, but we have to determine what the salary would be. So that piece is still hanging out there, and I don't know that any of us are prepared to discuss that. I'm not sure what other issues we might want to involve ourselves in, in that contract. Maybe the city attorney could address that.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's my understanding that the public works director has a contract with the city, so it may be as simple, and I don't mean to oversimplify by using that term, but it may be as simple as making an amendment that says for a stated period of time, he's going to act as the acting city manager, and we would include the rollback provision that you mentioned. I want to be clear, I think the rollback provision is not just when the city were to hire a permanent city manager, but it would basically give him the right that if for any reason the council decided, we don't want you to be our acting city manager anymore, that he has the right to go back to his position as public works director. So in other words, staying with the council manager, former government, where the council employees are, the city manager, the municipal judge, and the city attorney. And Mark was obviously not hired by the city council to be the public works director, that he would be able to go back to being the public works director if for whatever reason the city council decided he was not to be the manager anymore. As far as the salary, you could either have that discussion tonight if you wanted to. You could appoint one or two council members to work with Mark and the legal staff to determine what that amount should be and come back and ratify it at a vote at a future meeting. You could determine a percentage increase that his salary should go up in order to take on these new responsibilities and ask him if that would be acceptable to him, and then we would base it on a percentage. There are a number of different ways that you could do it. It's really a question of what works for you and what works for him, because we're talking about a contract between two parties, so we have to have agreement on both sides.
Mr. Mayor? Seems, my memory seems to be that we actually have a policy, an HR policy, about what happens with pay when somebody assumes an acting position. And, I mean, it's been a while, but it seemed like that they were bumped up to the bottom, the beginning tier of the, am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, I'd have to go pull the policy itself, but, and it's changed over the last few years, the acting, the acting pay policy. So I'd have to either pull the policy. The other option, too, would be to work with HR to figure out a type of salary that would work for Mark as well.
I mean, my inclination is, is we use the whatever policy that's currently in place for... for somebody that's assuming a position.
Councilmember Clark and members of council, the concern that I would have, and I'm not familiar off the top of my head with that policy, but my suspicion is, is that it would apply only to city employees, which would not be the city manager position, so that there would not, I'm hearing a yes from my colleagues here, that there would not be a sort of next level or bottom level for a city manager position that we would be able to bump him up to.
Well, it used to be that when we did surveys, there was a bottom level. I mean, when we hired Michael, we brought him in at the bottom level. So we did a survey, we had the bottom level and a top level, and I don't know if it's changed since then, but.
Oh, I'm sure there is. I just don't think that is part of the city personnel policy.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm sure the policy only applies to city employees, but I don't see any reason why it could not apply in this case. So the real question becomes what is the bottom level from the survey? And I don't know, having not seen a survey in six years or so.
HR has been giving us those every year, the average salaries.
Okay.
For city managers, those types of positions.
Been giving you guys that every year.
While you weren't here.
I was not here. You are correct.
Okay, so what I, what I think I'd like to try to do is I would like to make a motion to direct the city, the acting city attorney to prepare a contract to hire Mark Ralph as the acting city manager according to the city charter. And to work with the HR director to put a salary range in that contract, which we would select at the time that we ratify the contract.
And you need a resolution.
And a resolution at that time, at that time.
Second.
So the motion is to direct the city attorney to prepare a contract for the acting city manager position to Mark Ralph, to include in that a salary range coordinated with the personnel director, human services director, and to prepare a resolution to do that. And that would be for our next regular meeting. Okay, any further discussion?
Yes. Go ahead. I'll try it one more time in suggesting that we actually have an interview. It could occur at our next week's study session, since I know Mark's going to be there as well. My experience with interviews is they're actually a two-way conversation. And taking a position where you actually have one-seventh of bosses in that regard is a little bit of a difference. And whether it's Mark, who I do work well together in passing things and think highly of Mark, would think that he might want to get some clarifications as well on that front. And we should probably have that as a group discussion. I'm going to offer that as a suggestion to those that made the motion to say, hey, can we have that conversation before we actually move to appointment?
So Phil, the study session is July 12th. We have B2 zone district council discussions again, capital needs financing options, which includes some of the same folks we're talking about. We could conduct an interview at that time, because we're not going to see the staff work to do the resolution until the following week anyway. And so I think that might be something we'd all be comfortable with. I don't know that I'd need to put it in the resolution.
I was just, you were making the motion and it seconded, and I wanted to add that as a consideration, if you want to include it or you just want to say include it on the agenda next week.
I think we, I think we can include it on the agenda and put some time aside to have a conversation with Mark. Mark, I'm seeing a nod, since he's the other person in the conversation. Okay, so we have a motion and a second that I have made. Any further discussion? Ready to vote?
The vote is six in favor with councilmember, or mayor pro temp Brinkman.
That was, I'm sorry, I pushed the wrong way.
Okay.
The vote is five in favor with councilmember, mayor pro temp Brinkman, and councilmember Serenannic voting no, the motion carries five to two.
Okay, and then remember then, Mike, if you could make sure we get in the study session, that on the agenda.
Already on there.
Okay. Okay, I think that covers all the issues that we have to move forward, at least to the point of the study session. Agenda item B I put in, and it's to talk about conduct and protocols. And I really have a limited discussion. I just want to say, let me get my. I think there's a lot of things still up in the air in regards to people's feelings and emotions involving our council protocols and standards of conduct and what's been going on. But I do think that it's important that we mention that our protocols do not address sending an email to city employees from a member of council, rather than directing the correspondence through the manager. And neither do the protocols discuss the kind of language that needs to be limited to in those emails and what's unacceptable, and if it was done by an employee would result in discipline. So I would like to have an appropriate sentence or two in our protocols that addresses the issue of emails, and then I mentioned a couple of the issues. And I think at a future study session, we should discuss that and include them in our protocols. Maybe it's the study session next week. We do a lot by emails, and we're lagging a little behind on really discussing them. We had a big discussion earlier this year about the applicability of emails to our work. But this is a little different in that I think it's an area that probably deserves treatment in our legislative rules, and council can decide whether they do or don't. But next study session, I'd like to see us talk about that. And again, I'm talking one or two sentences that talks about that. It has a tremendous impact on employees, because they have some very specific rules they have to follow. And I think we need to make sure we reflect those in our protocols. That's, that's all I had on that unless there's further discussion. Doug.
Well, I'm, I'm actually surprised that the security on the email system is set up so that anybody can send an email to all city employees. That to me seems to be a shortcoming of, never can remember if it's IT or IS that.
IS, they'll tell you.
IS, sorry. It's, seems to me a shortcoming of the IS security protocols that probably needs to be fixed. I think we've got two issues here. One is following the protocols, but I think another issue is, is who do we want representing us as a mayor pro temp? And frankly, the mayor pro temp and the mayor both are elected by the council to represent the council and the city. If you've got either one of those positions that's actively campaigning against the majority of the council, you've got a problem. And we have a problem. And it's not a question of not knowing what the protocols are, it's a question of just deciding to go off and do it. So if, if we really want to move forward and select a city manager, then we have to get over this name-calling that's happening. And I'm not adverse to council people advocating strongly for their position. I've certainly done that. I think though, that when you get into either the mayor or the pro temp, that there are obligations that come with that position and limitations that come with that position. And if you're not willing to accept the limitations, then you shouldn't take the position. So I'm disappointed that the email went out to all city employees. I'm disappointed in the language that was used in the email. That seems to be a continuation of part of the problem that we had with the city manager, in my opinion. I think Debbie is entirely within her rights to stir up the citizens as a council person to come up with a vote of no confidence, but I don't think that the mayor pro temp is within her rights to stir up a vote of no confidence for the majority of the council, because part of the job of the pro temp is to represent the council. So I'm flummoxed on what to happen. We can add another item to the protocol, but that's really not going to change anything. Because frankly, we all know how to behave. And if we don't know how to behave, we probably don't, shouldn't be elected. So that's my feeling on it.
Jerry.
I think you do bring up some good points. I think her email was harsh. I also thought Bill's was harsh when he called everybody cowards. And he has also used other derogatory terms, especially toward councilman mayor over the last couple of months. Debbie did apologize, and I accept your apology. It was definitely down in the heat of the moment, and I'm sure you would not do it again. But I'm, I'm willing to, and I do accept her apology. And I'm hoping as a city council, we can come together and, and not do these derogatory comments that are made from time to time. You know, we don't need that stuff. It's tough enough up here. We do make decisions that we think as individuals are best for the city. And, and I would not like it if city council seven members always voted the same every time on the big issues. We are passionate more times than others. Like Debbie, I appreciate your, your email. When I got that, I was very happy about it. It did make me happy. I would have emailed you or text you, but then people will say that we're violating our rules somehow. Because frankly, folks, council members talk to each other all the time. And don't think that that doesn't happen. And there's been some stuff out there, and I'm a little disappointed in our, even our local press, that they didn't dig into this and see that this stuff happens all the time. But Doug, I, councilman Clark.
I appreciate your comment very much. And, and if anything, maybe that's a rebuke of some sort. I'm okay with, with councilman Brinkman standing as she is.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to address that a little bit. I think, Jerry, I made the comments you referred to me making that were harsh some months ago, or when Mayor Beckman introduced a motion that was a total surprise to everybody, was, I want to say, I don't want to overuse the word radical, but it was a very stunning kind of motion that took us by surprise, or certainly took me by surprise. And I think my comment was, I'd like to know what you're thinking. I don't think that's overly harsh. I think it was a question. And I did apologize to you, because if I remember that night, you wrote a letter to the entire council in violation of protocols. We all, we all have done protocol violations. I'm, I'm sorry. And, and I did apologize for my words about Mayor Beckman that night. I did indicate that. There is an elephant in the room here. And that's that, there has been very good evidence that the decision to fire Mr. Penny was not made in the open. And that's, was reported in the Independent. The first I heard about it was when it slipped from you. I commented at that meeting that there were four, three occasions when I felt people walked into the room with the votes in their hand. There is very good evidence out there that there were text exchanges between several council members that included reference to other council members that would be told about this vote, and they happened some three weeks before the vote ever occurred. So there's a lot happening out of the public eye, where four council members have cut off three other council members. I'm a team player, and I've spent a lot of my life working team situations. I've never had a team where four people ran off and did something different. And I'm trying to do this as diplomatically as I can, because it's, it's a very real situation where the sun wasn't shining. And these decisions have been made out of hand. The first I heard urban renewal was up was when Mayor Beckman told me that he had four votes for urban renewal being disbanded, and it was done. So this, this is the elephant in the room. And to hide behind a protocol conversation about this bigger issue is, I think it's a smokescreen. We need to get this council on the same page. And I really want to do that. I really want to get this council to work for the good of citizens. We have 45,000 people in this city. And by, by making a decision about the city manager, and it's not about the city manager decision, it's about the way it was made, that precluded the input of three of the district representatives, said that 33,000 people in this city only got one representative. You said 33,000 people only got their at-large representative, they did not get their just direct district representative's input into that matter. And we were all elected. And we need to get on the same page. I think that that's, that's the real issue. It's not a question of the appropriateness of the letters. My, my letter to staff was, when I, when I said council was not courageous, I forget the word I used, but cowardly, was because they, they did it behind our backs. I felt like it was behind our backs. That's why I use that term. The rest of it was a pep talk to, to staff. And I've had probably 20 to 25 staff either write me a letter, or come up to me in the hallway, or, or call me and say thank you for doing that. Because they were stunned at the time it happened. And it was a human outreach. That's all that was. So if you want to punish me for reaching out to our staff, go ahead. But I'd, I'd like to make a motion to try to get our council to work together. And because, and go ahead and laugh. And that's part of the problem, is because I don't think that you think it's possible. And I, I don't care for that reaction. Whoever laughed, I don't know who it was. So this is, this is really hard stuff. And I, I think we all need to look square at this, because I respect the, the ability of council to make a decision on any issue. And I don't care what anybody's opinion on something is, as long as it's honestly presented in an ethical way that is respective of the public trust in our job to represent citizens. That's our job. And we can sit up here and bat it back and forth, get citizen input, and make a decision in what we think is best for the city. Four to three carries the day, and I respect that all day long. But we need to figure out how to get us back on the same page. So here's my motion. And I thought about this a lot. I move that council immediately suspend action on any council-introduced motions, and work with a mediator to determine and implement more effective working relationships and actions until such a time as council votes by a supermajority of five to two to resume addressing council-addressed motions under fair, open, and transparent conditions as defined by the Colorado Open Meetings Law. The issue is that open meetings law was, I do not think, followed in the matters of the city manager firing. And we have an opinion from the lawyer at the Colorado Freedom of Information Coalition that, that that was the case. We need to have full transparency, and everybody up here talks about it. And it is not occurring. I'm not satisfied that it has. And we need to really have a heart-to-heart on that. And if it, Sam Mamede is a good place to start, the director of the CML. But we need to get, figure out a way to get this council to work for the good of the citizens as a whole, instead of just for special interest groups. I respect special interest groups. They're important to the, to the process, and they should have a voice. But we need to figure out how we all work as a team. And I'd really be interested in how all of you would like to. how all of you would like to address that, and how we go forward from it.
So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I would point out that that's a violation of the charter. Charter directs council to take actions by motions, resolutions, and ordinances, and any other change from that would have to be a change in the charter. We don't get, we don't get to change that. And when we were elected, we were elected to those terms in the charter. And I can find that section in the charter if necessary, but maybe the city attorney can help also. But we are obligated to take action by those three means, and to modify that requires a modification of the charter.
This is not, this is not a failure to take action on things, that's just saying that we suspend bringing council motions forward until we can act on it. This is a proper motion, I believe. But I defer to the city manager or the city attorney for an opinion.
May I?
Please.
So the mayor's correct about the reference to the charter. My understanding of the motion was not to come up with some other form of action other than what was in the charter, but it was basically saying we're not going to take any action until we go through this process first. I'll tell you what my, my bigger concern is with the motion, and frankly, I was going to make the same comment if someone were to have made a motion to remove the mayor pro tem, is that under the Colorado Open Meetings Law, the agenda needs to have action items on it that give the average citizen some idea of what kind of action the council will be debating and taking at the meeting. And this issue was not on the agenda, nor was the issue as to whether the mayor pro tem would be kept or removed. So my suggestion to the council on any of these issues, it's absolutely appropriate to have a more detailed discussion about them at a follow-up meeting, and notice them on the agenda, and potentially take action at a future meeting. But I don't think it would be appropriate to vote on this motion tonight for the...
So I stand corrected, and I apologize. I'll withdraw the motion. But I, I would urge council to, to consider how we're going to get back on the same track. And I don't know if, I mean, what suggestions you people have, if you just want to keep charging ahead with your four-to-three group, or do you want to really have a heart-to-heart about how this is going? Three items, you know, the city manager firing, urban renewal, and streetscapes. All had the votes in their hand before they came in the room. It really felt like that. And I think we need to address that. I think we need to address how we work as a group and how communication goes, because one of the protocols we have is there's evenness of information. And when the mayor comes in and says, I have four votes, that means he's already had conversation in some depth with four people and hasn't even bothered to tell some of the others. So we, we need to, it's, it's a leadership issue, but it's also an issue of how we conduct our business, because we all have to have information necessary to make a proper decision. And who knows? If we had all had time to contemplate the, any of these issues, say, you know, the city manager issue, maybe we would have come to 7-0 to dismiss him. Maybe it would have been 0 to 7. We don't know. But it should be fair, open, totally transparent, and in the open.
Further discussion?
I think that repeating feelings and making the pronouncement that that is fact isn't getting us where we need to go. I have a concern about communication only going to certain council members, and in fact, that was happening from the city, from the city manager to four council members. And I'll give you a specific example, and that is related to the minutes, where the city manager said he had gone and gotten statistics off the website on how many hits there were and how many searches there were for the city minutes, and sent that to four council members rather than seven. And that has been an issue that's been brought up before. Jerry has brought that up multiple times. I have a problem with that. That's not the only example of that taking place. So I agree that we have a problem with communication going out to a subset of the members. We have a problem with the city manager or the ex-city manager meeting with some council members and giving them information that the other council members don't get. I can make suppositions on when that happens based on the questions that come up in council meetings, but it is supposition. So if we want to go forward, perhaps I would suggest that you stop making accusations that you can't substantiate that are based on your feelings or what you think that you're observing, and then we go forward.
Well, I'm just going to make a brief comment related to the email that I sent. I was elected to council in 2007, so I've been up here a long time, and I have always behaved with the highest level of respect for this office. I've always chosen my words well. I have always been very deliberate with what I'm going to say and how I say it. Occasionally, I'll stumble over some words, but for the most part, I've been very intentional about making sure that I stay within the bounds of what is expected from an elected official. So we had what is, in my opinion, and will probably, hopefully, never be worse than it was on June 14th. That was the most difficult council meeting I have ever gone through, and it continues to pain me. There are 450 people that weren't in this room that were watching that council meeting, and they all had to come to work the next day. So I struggled, and I struggled, and I struggled with what happened at that meeting. And then I tried to sleep and couldn't, obviously. So I do what nobody should do, and that's get out the old laptop and write an email at 1:30 in the morning. I don't apologize for my sentiments in that email, and I don't apologize for sending it to staff. We didn't have a city manager at the time. I didn't break any charter. There was no one to focus that, funnel that through. It was probably inappropriate, and I'll take the punches for that. But my intention was simply to reach out to them and let them know that, just what it said, support, and that I didn't agree with what happened. And they could have seen that by watching the show, so they didn't see anything, or I didn't tell them anything they didn't already know. But I just felt like I needed to say it, and I guess I felt like I wanted, I thought some of them might need to hear it. Did I choose a couple of words that I probably, well, that I definitely shouldn't have chosen? Yeah. And I apologize for that, and I apologize to the council members that I addressed in that, and I also apologize to the community with the posting on next door. So apologies have been said. I don't think that there's any need to be real concerned about me doing it again. But I would also offer that I do respect the position as a council member and as an elected, and I don't see that being a mayor pro tem is any different than being any other council member. I would assume additional duties if the mayor couldn't attend a meeting. And I respect that the council voted that, voted me as pro tem. Mayor, or council member Clark was the one vote against my position as pro tem, so I'm not surprised to hear your comments this evening. You've been very consistent in how you view myself as a council member, so. But I believe that we all act at that higher level, and that it is our responsibility to continue to act at that level. And when we misstep and we apologize, then we're forgiven, and we move on. And if we don't start to heal this, and if we don't start this inviting, and we don't stop what's going on, we are doing the biggest disservice to this community that we ever could have done, and it isn't about calling names. It's much bigger, and it's much larger than that, and it needs to start healing and fixing, and it needs to start with all seven of us. And even though Mr. Hoppings' motion did not make it through, I think there is something to be said for having a conversation with the seven of us, which unfortunately, in my opinion, would be public, because this council needs to get in a room with these seven people and not the rest of the public, and have a conversation that we haven't been able to have for years. That's why you're seeing this. Many of you would disagree. That's fine, disagree. That's about all I have. Thank you.
No late emails.
No, I'm not going to go home and write an email, not to you.
Do we have any other further discussion on agenda item B? Okay, that brings us to C. That's ID 16-141. It's a request for reconsideration. I don't have any information on this, Councilmember Serdanik.
Kyle, let's project from the laptop, please. Council, with all the good comments that were made, I think we need to clean some things up, and my perspective is probably unique in what transpired on, on June 14th. We're a policymaking group. We're a legislative group. Occasionally, we get involved in quasi-judicial. By charter, we are not to be involved in administration, but we do have three direct reports per charter. There was an action item inserted on the agenda on June 14th. As the city, acting a city attorney pointed out, action items should be posted before taken. And the question might be whether that action was actually a legal action on the part of this council. Regardless of that, on June 14th, it was a bit surreal. This is harmonious Bosch's Harrowing of Hell. Okay? And for those that may be familiar with Bosch, at least by some, he's considered the father of surrealism. So for me, it was a very interesting perspective. Some folks have indicated that there were one-on-one discussions with council members. I had none. I was told that I was unreachable. Yet, on June 13th and June 14th, I spoke with four citizens and two businesses that were located within the city of Littleton, regardless of where I was. I had indicated that the best way to communicate with me was by text. I received one call that I wasn't quite able to answer, because I was on a bike ride. I was with and representing and for a nonprofit, a nonprofit that had donated 200 bicycles to our Title I 5th graders. I was riding with some folks from Littleton, also so inclined. There's been some other information that has come out. I've been told, Phil, it'll get explained to you when you return back to town. I've been available. That hasn't occurred. So Frank Atwood very nicely pointed out, in the absence of other information, what you have is fact. There was an opinion by a lawyer that indicated that this was an illegal meeting. It's not necessarily where four people get in the room at the same point in time, but it's where they communicate and carry that communication and representation of that communication forward. Councilmember Cole, councilmember Clark, councilmember Valdez, and the mayor were all included in the chain and in this reference. I remember Bruce Beckman when he first joined council, former president of Littleton Rotary, talked about principles, the four-way test.
Phil, are you going to talk about me, or do you want to talk about the issue? Because if you're going to talk about me, I have a response.
I'm going to be talking about the issue because what you said is, here's a great way to behave. Okay? Is it the truth? Is it fair? Does it represent goodwill? Is it beneficial to all? In this, we have a lot of he said, she said, from a lot of different perspectives. It would be nice if we could actually identify where the truth is. But one of the things that I know is, from my perspective, I have a pretty simple request. Four of you have control of this, which is to request a reconsideration of the termination of the city manager immediately. That was the action that was taken on June 14th. As the city attorney pointed out, if it's not posted, it shouldn't be taken action. So we have an opportunity to deal with it, get at least this part behind us, and feel a little bit better. That's my request. Thank you.
Phil, would you put that text back up, please, the, that you just used? No, the next one down, please. No, the other way. So I want to talk about that. You're excused. I'm not talking to you directly. I'm responding. This is a part of a text. This is the great conspiracy, and there was no conspiracy. I think my motivations have been pretty clear. I've expressed them in this room many times, concern about the city manager, or concern about the projects, concern about whether community was being listened to, concerns about that. My motivations have been clear. I think it's important to discuss motivation, however. This is not the complete text. There's a fourth person. There's a fourth person. It's the city manager. Why has this text been sent out by the city manager? What was his motivation for doing it? And how did it get there? The reality is, this was a group text. The night before, I had attended a celebration at the Littleton United Methodist Church concerning the people that were involved in the fire. Councilmember Valdez took a picture of me, and he sent it in a group to my wife, to me, to the city manager, and of course, he was the sender. It was sitting on my phone. Michael was in that group text. I don't think you see his comment in here, and you wouldn't know that. So what was his motivation for releasing this edited version of the text? It was clearly to make it look bad for me. Well, it wasn't bad. It was my mistake. I was on the phone with one of the council members. It was Peggy, and she was telling me her concerns. She had had a really bad week, and I want to tell you, we had all had a bad week. This was the week before the Grove. This was the week when we were finding out information that the citizens had that was better than the information that we had, and we were pretty frustrated. I'm speaking "we," me. I know Peggy was, for sure. Some others expressed it. On this, on this dais, that's where a lot of the four-way conversation occurred, was on this dais. So I hung up from the phone call from Peggy. I'd been on the phone with Peggy when my wife had left. And I said, hi, honey. There's the conspiracy. That really lets you know this is part of a conspiracy. Would you please make sure you see that? It says, hi, honey. Peggy's just lost confidence. That was the phone call that I had. And hers response back, I think, was pretty darn good. And if you have a relationship with your spouse, you probably discuss a lot of these things, and hers was, geez, just stay neutral, let somebody else take the lead, and whatever else it says there. But that was her advice. If you've been married for any period of time, you know that you've got a lot of advice from your spouse. I wish all of it was that good for all of us. And that's how that happened. Well, guess what? I accidentally hit it. It went to. It went to Jerry. Because he had sent me the photos that are not on that text and the comments that are not on that text there about where it was and what it was, that ceremony that night. And Jerry says, "I'm not ready to vote." Because he had no idea it showed up out of the clear blue sky to him. I wasn't having a conversation with him. I wasn't having a conversation with anyone except my wife, but I accidentally said it to the city manager. I spent over an hour in the afternoon, Saturday afternoon, talking to the city manager what this meant. Talking to him about how his credibility was dropping quickly among some of the council members. I had just had a very serious discussion with Councilmember Cole. And I called Councilmember Cole that afternoon, and I said, "I did talk to the manager about that." And that was one of the parts of this conspiracy is, nobody ever told the manager nothing, as if I never talked to him regularly, or as if these other council members did not talk to them regularly about their concerns. I can tell you, they did on the dais, and they did privately. And so where's the motivation and where's the honesty? So let's go to the next one. Is it the truth, Phil? This is not the truth. And Michael Penny's responsible. And why would he have done that? And who did he give it to? And how far did it get distributed by that person, the edited version of that? Because if they just released it like it was... I think stay neutral and let the others lead was a great suggestion for my wife, and I think the fact that it said, "Hi, honey," indicates to you there was no great conspiracy. Let's be real, folks. Let's be real. This is a very serious business we're in here up on council. We all take it very, very seriously. When we walked door-to-door to get votes, we talked about how seriously we took it. We talked about the responsibilities that we have as a council. Seven of us have probably done this. That's what we're doing, and we see things differently. And the next one, Phil, is it the truth? I want you to know that I have that in my office, and that was the reason why I did not want to keep that city manager any longer. Because he couldn't stand by the very first one in what I believe in, is it the truth? He was no longer truthful to the people in this room, and he was not truthful with some of the council members. Now, it's a really tough thing to have to talk about that in public, but that's what we had to do. So I chose one incident. One incident in which he was not truthful to me. He was not truthful to council, because it involved all of council, in which he basically violated the charter by putting council members out there to deal with operational matters. So Phil, was it the truth? No. That was the story, and that's what I said. It was the straw that broke the camel's back. So folks, let's back off a little bit. Let's back off a little bit, and let's be a little bit more recognition of the challenge of being council members and dealing with a very, very bad situation that seemed to be getting worse month by month. I became the mayor in November. Not much happened through December. I can tell you that in January, and it was the Grove, among other things. But it was also the fire. 120 people were evacuated from that apartment. Seventeen pieces of fire equipment. Three police officers went to the hospital, and the city manager never called council. Never called council to tell them about it. It occurred on noon on Wednesday, and I found out about it because of a business person I knew in Arapahoe County the following day. When I called him, I said, "What the heck happened with this fire? Why was I not notified? Why was council not notified? It's our business. It's the biggest crisis in 50 years in this city." And his answer was, "Well, nobody told him. Nobody told him." Is it the truth? And you know, the other one down there on that list is, is it fair to all concerned? Does it build goodwill? We had 120 seniors displaced with what they had on their back, and it wasn't an interest to the city manager. That's when I began to really lose faith, because he didn't care. No additional effort was made by this city to take care of those 120 people, with the exception of a fire hero named Jim Wilson, who worked that whole time. And that's the fact. I went to the Red Cross. I went to the school district. I went to the church. I went to all these different things, and I was the only representative of the city there. Nobody from the manager's office. So let's be real, folks. This decision wasn't just some four people thinking about some way that they were going to screw somebody very badly, or they were going to hurt the city, or they wanted to go back in time. This was a relationship that had gotten worse with time and in which I have a number of other ones in my pocket. There were reasons why I lost confidence in that city manager. But the other part of the story is piling on. I was asked by reporters, "Well, is that all there was?" I told each of those reporters, and I know it's not in the story, is the man is no longer employed by the city. It's not appropriate to be talking about him anymore. He's no longer in the public eye. He's no longer an employee. Back off. Back off. I'm not going to be part of the piling on. I wish others had felt the same way. So thank you for putting that up, Phil. It does explain a few things. What an insult to the integrity of the council by Michael Penny, who released that. And who did he give it to?
May I?
Go ahead.
It is interesting that, I think even our local press, they took the stories of some people out there and said that, oh, they're daisy chaining these certain council members. Our former city manager daisy chained constantly. You mentioned the Grove. The week before the Grove meeting we had a few weeks ago, I believe he met with every city council member here. I think it was two council members at a time, because if he had three, it was a meeting. So he only did it two at a time. I think Councilman Beckman may have met twice with him. But that's what I was talking about. People talk all the time. So he would meet with two council members. They would have their questions, and two more would come in, and they would have questions, and he would share what other people said. Again, that information is not getting out there, and I'd appreciate it if folks could look more into how does the process actually work. Many times, the city manager was more than truthful to me, and this has been over the last couple of years. Many times, he said to me, "What can I do to regain your trust?" A person doesn't ask you that just because they want to be your friend. It's because they've not been honest with you, so they want to regain your trust. He lost my trust many times, and he would many times would want to regain my trust. I didn't meet with him every morning like some did, at the city expense for breakfast. I didn't do that. I didn't want to do that anymore. My decision was my decision. I was not a part of some gang of four. That sounds cool, but I was not a gang of four. I'm an individual. I heard from a lot of my district, not all was for, not all was against it. And it is difficult to not want to put this out in public. I tried to do it without having to shame or humiliate the former city manager. He was a nice guy. He is a nice guy. There was also, I had some ethic issues with him, and that was part of my decision. I really didn't want to have to put that stuff out there. I was not enamored by this city manager, as I believe some are. I was not a personal friend. While I was friendly, I was not a personal friend. I wasn't invited to his wedding. I wasn't asked to officiate at his wedding. To me, he was an employee. With employees, you have to remain a professional level of responsibility and trust with each other. Once you've crossed that line and become too personal with your employees, you can't make proper decisions. And in this case, the decision I made was my decision, mine alone, and I know that it did bother some people. But it was my decision that I believe was best for the city of Littleton. Thank you.
Bruce, if I may. Phil, may you continue? Yes, you can continue.
The additional titles that we might have are not mantles. They're responsibilities. And by our protocols, as well as charter, you're the facilitator of this body. And they have an action by which there was some consideration over a period of time and not to have had a discussion to say, "This is going to come up when you're not there," I think was not fair to the citizens of this city. So I'm...
Well, here's the deal, Phil. First of all, we haven't had a full council for about two, two and a half months. We've had people missing. So it's just not an unusual thing to have someone missing. So the requirement is to have a quorum of four. So I understand your concern, but the reality is, sometimes, the city business continues. I didn't make the motion. I didn't know the motion was coming, for sure. But I'll tell you what we did have. We had somebody rally the city to write emails and send emails to council members for the five days prior. Five days prior to that, I believe, we were getting emails. "We hear you're going to fire the city manager." We got letters from people in the city the day before, I think it was. I believe it was the day before or the couple of days before. Who told the city? Who told the city employees that they should be sending information to council about not firing the city manager? I received a phone call from a department head representing other department heads. Who did all that? Because there was no guarantee of a motion coming. There had been a frustration level going for weeks, back months. In fact, there's an example. I was trying to stay neutral and keep things going back at the day of that text. So a lot of context here, but somebody sure knew that there was an issue out there and sure knew that it was coming to a head. But I'll tell you what. The motion was made when it was made, and I understand the issue that attorney's talking about, and I understand what you're talking about.
That was also three weeks before we took action.
Yeah. So Phil, I understand everything that you're saying, but I don't have any response to you, other than it seems like a city had been rallied, employees had been rallied. And I'll go to one more issue. If you were doing an interview for a city manager, and you said, "Do you think it's appropriate for a city manager to rally the employees to deal with a disciplinary action for the city manager being done by council?" If in that interview, somebody said, "Oh, yeah, I think that's appropriate," I'd be moving on to another person's interview, because it's not. And that was the context, Phil. It all happened while you were gone. So it is what it is. It was what it was. But the situation was getting worse, and truth really, really was the issue. And as I said that afternoon, that evening, the Friday before that Tuesday was when I learned absolutely of the manager's lack of truth with me. So it was very, at that point, I had less confidence.
I'm questioning your decision on that. It's the process.
Okay. So what would you like to do, Phil?
Asked for reconsideration, so that we can at least get it above board. None of you have to take any action, but it might speak loudly.
I'm sorry. Say that last part.
Said, "You don't have to take any action, but that might speak loudly."
Well, a request for reconsideration, according to our legislative rules, is done at the time that a matter is being considered during that session. So we don't have an ability to do it per our own rules to reconsider. Any other comments? Any other knowledge besides what I just expressed?
I'd like to make one.
Just a point of clarification. I think you mentioned it in some of the earlier discussions at the beginning of the meetings. You correctly stated in the council legislative rules about reconsideration happening at the meeting where the action is taken, and also correctly mentioned that there's another section of the rules that the council may suspend the rules upon a majority vote. So I think probably from a process standpoint, what Councilmember Serenick is asking his colleagues, would council vote to suspend the rules in order to allow for a motion for reconsideration at this time? Council has the legal authority to that. I'm not suggesting you should or shouldn't. I'm just saying that under your rules, that would be the process.
And if we do that, and if a motion is made and seconded, there's no discussion, it's an up or down vote?
Well, it doesn't actually say that. It says, "Any rule except such as required by a two-thirds vote may be suspended by the vote of a majority of the members of council." Oh, you're right. Without debate. So there would be no debate on the motion.
I'm not hearing any further motions. And at this point, we're done with the discussion on Agenda Item C.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
I'd just like to make a concluding comment on that, because in an effort to get us on the same page in the future, which is really where I want to go, if there's any other incident where council members are concerned about an issue, it's very difficult. And I agree with Ms. Beckman that on personnel matters, the lack of executive sessions is a handicap, because you can hash things out, and I don't think anybody likes to have their whole life laid bare in public. And if you're having a real issue with somebody, if you need to hack it out, it ought to be in private, and it makes it very difficult. So with the city manager or any of the direct reports, it makes it very difficult to have that discussion publicly. But on issues that council members want to have coming forward, for whatever reasons, I would think it would be incumbent on us as a whole to try to get that information to the full council, and it's usually going to be in a meeting. You know, "I'm having an issue with XYZ. I think we need to talk about that. Let's get that in a study session," instead of having it fester for weeks and then surprise three members of council. So that's just a goal I'd like to see us work toward in the future.
Okay, it's quarter of 10, and our protocol is that we stop at 10 unless we make a decision as a council to proceed. We have one more, really two more agenda items. We have public comment, and I'm not aware of what public comment is out there. And we have comments and reports, but it could be that we can't do it in the 15 minutes. So at this time, council, are we willing to continue past 10 o'clock in order to complete the agenda?
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
So we will continue to the end of the agenda. Public comment. This is the second opportunity for a public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to express opinions or ask questions that are not part of the public hearings. An immediate response should not be expected. Anyone who would like to speak, please sign on the card. I have four names, and I'll make sure anyone else who might have missed this has an opportunity. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated, and there's a three-minute time limit. First person is Carol Porter.
Carol Porter, District 3. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. I actually came here prepared with more pieces of paper, but instead, I want to thank every member of this council for the courage that it took to have the session here tonight and the discussion we all witnessed. Mayor Beckman, I want you to know that I have more confidence in you than I did when I walked in the room originally. So thank you very much. And also, Councilperson Valdez, I want to let you know that I totally agree with your point of view, that the friendship part of the relationship is part of what caused this whole problem to begin with. It's for council not to be friends with the city manager, but to provide leadership, guidance, accountability, and to go forward in a professional way. So I agree with you, sir, that I believe that that was one of the problems here with the relationship with the former city manager, and I am hopeful that the city council will learn from those mistakes. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Carol?
Sir?
It's Valdez.
Valdez. You know, I'm caught. I'm so sorry. I'm caught.
You just need to change the spelling. You just need to end it.
Thank you. My apologies.
Thank you. Next person is Chuck Reed.
Thank you. My name is Chuck Reed. I live at 628 West...
I live at 628 West Easter Place. Thank you. The opportunity or the, the observation that today is right after Independence Day is not lost on me when, as a country, we made the decision about self-governance. And it's hard work, clearly. And community engagement is hard work. And communication is hard work. And everybody that's here tonight, those that just left and those that were here earlier are choosing to engage in the community. And that engagement doesn't just happen in this room. It happens all over Littleton in a variety of different places and manners. You all answered that call, though, with a really unusual way. You raised your hand and said that you'd run for elected office, and you took an oath of office to uphold the laws. And I want to echo the thanks and the appreciation for reading all sorts of boring staff reports, all sorts of public input, and exposing yourself to people contacting you at all places. That takes a special person, and so thank you for doing that. Everybody in this room, all of you, we really do want success for Littleton. We have vastly different approaches for what that might be at times, but we all want success. And I sense here just a phenomenal opportunity, opportunities to listen more, to engage more. And it's not just about what's happening today. I had a good conversation with former Mayor Cernanik about the time when I was the chairman of the Historic Preservation Board, and that communication was not good at that time either. So it's a great opportunity to listen and to communicate better. Keep working at this because I think that you're at this door and an opportunity to elevate discussion in Littleton and to elevate Littleton. And public policy is hard. There's a truism that it's the wingnuts that hold the center together. So I'm going to give you all a wingnut and some, five nuts or five washers here. And you can decide whether or not on certain issues, you're going to be the wingnut, or whether you're going to be the person that's in the center, allowed to be led on issues. And I hope that you recognize the individual strengths and expertise that you all bring into the council room. And let me tell you that right at the moment, I'm being a wingnut in terms of raising an issue like this and bringing a little silly gadget. But my good friend Frank's another wingnut, and we have fun conversations, and we learn a lot from each other because we listen and we try and understand. And I hope that that happens for all of you, as it's going to keep happening for us, because we really want you to succeed as a council. We do. We might have opposite opinions at times about what that looks like, but we want that success for you because that means better success for us.
Thank you, Chuck.
Chuck?
You're out of time.
Every one of those staff reports is amazingly exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you for recognizing that.
Pam Chadburn, please.
Mention the washers.
I am Pam Chadburn. I don't think I said that before, but I still am. Yeah, so the discussion in the past several months, I think, has been great. And it's a privilege to watch democracy at work with my neighbors and my, my friends. So I did say, though, before that when you look for a new city manager, what I'm looking for is a good manager. And city council sets policy with housing. I want to know where we're going to get affordable housing in the city. We rezoned our five. Gentrification is occurring. People who can't afford and can't find anywhere else to live are being displaced by $600,000 duplexes. And this is wrong, and this is not Littleton. So I want you to make a housing policy. And I don't want you to bring it, I don't want this new city manager to bring it forward as an ordinance on first reading one week, and we get, you know, three days to read it as the public and then two weeks to think about it. There should be a series of meetings, and we should make maybe some draft policies. And that will give the entire development community a sense of where we want to go. So even though it's not binding, it's still a good step and helps us walk before we run in building these policies. So housing policy, transportation policy, what's our growth policy, guys? What are our targets? What is our population that we're shooting for? And then we can figure out how to get there. We can tell the city manager, go do that. I was very disappointed in the comments of planning board about B2 at the last study session. Make it simple. We don't want the public to have to think too much. We don't want a policy that actually gets what we want. Well, I'm sorry, I do. And we can understand it, just like we can understand a good lighting policy. I'm sorry, but this stuff is not that hard. We can do it. And we can make a great city. So I hope we go forward. Let's let the past be the past, go forward. I see this as a hopeful time, like many people have expressed. So thanks for listening.
Thank you. Cherry Chisholm? Thank you. I don't have anyone else on the list. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? Please, Carol.
Carol Brezak, live in the Fourth District. I do want to compliment you on this discussion at the end. It's been great. And even though you don't have the privacy of an executive session, you were able to get the discussion out for the public to hear. And that's a benefit for everyone in this room, everyone at home watching, everyone who will watch, because people will tell them to. So if we didn't change the charter, you would have done this in an exec session, and you would have come out, and we would not have benefited from any of what we heard. And I think the turmoil that we experienced tonight would just go on and on. We would not get onto the road of perhaps healing, which is what I would like to see do. I don't want to sound like I'm lecturing, but you have opened a door of opportunity of perhaps getting things worked out among you. And I would like to throw out a couple of ideas. First of all, what you've experienced or what some of you have expressed is pretty much what some of the citizens have felt as well, as far as conversation and being included and how we are treated. Michael Penny also wanted my trust. I couldn't give it to him. So it wasn't a problem that's just up here. It's a problem in this room and in the community that needs to be fixed. We've always had four-three votes. And I've sat in here when I've been on the losing end of that four-three vote, but I go home, that's the way it is, and I work to understand and move on. So you're going to have four-three votes. It doesn't mean things are happening behind the scene or that we need to rally the public to put out a petition. One thing that we used to do years ago in a former life that I thought was actually a pretty good practice, when we had our first reading, it was a discussion. Some of the concerns that you might have on a first reading, they get discussed in front of the public. We have an idea what direction you're moving before the second reading comes. But it seems a lot of times, the second reading is a scramble. Sometimes the second reading is completely different than what the first reading was. I think the biggest thing that you, I've got 26 seconds. You all know that open meetings law is important to me. I've been hounding on it since 2005. Part of the problem is a culture that has been created where motions get put up on an agenda without being on the agenda. There are lots of things that would make you more successful, but you need to get somebody in who really knows the open meetings law. Because if you abide by it, a lot of your concerns get taken care of. Thank you. Really, this was a great meeting.
Thank you. Betty.
I'm Benny Harris. I live in District Two. And I want to thank you all. I know it was difficult, it was very hard, but you did this and you did it in front of the people. And I want to offer you the greatest praise for doing it. Because what you have done is demonstrated to the people what we all believe that we should be doing. And that is participating in governing ourselves. Great job, no matter how hard it was. So go home and pat yourself on the back. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Why did I even ask?
You've changed clothes.
It went unnoticed.
As our meeting went, has gone so long, Frankie had to change her clothes, huh? He wants some hardware?
Once again, can we have opaque overhead projector? That's what I was brought up on calling it. I would like to express other citizens' thanks. I'm also looking forward to seeing citizen cards that can be responded to from a more responsive communicative city council. With regards to the interview process, I believe there's vacancies on the election commission. Thank you. And the schedule for it, may I ask?
Of course. Of course. The applications close on the 15th. I wanted to get it in to the Littleton Report, which just came out. I wanted to get that in the Littleton Report, so we had a big pool. And I haven't had anybody apply as of yet, but they have until the 15th to apply. And then we'll have set up a time when council can interview them.
And that's the election, vacancies are on which commissions, may I ask?
Just the election commission.
Just the election commission. Okay, thank you.
I have two seats open.
Two seats open. I encourage others to apply for the election commission. Yes, I'll continue lobbying and advocating for approval voting, which, as the T-shirt says, approval voting, vote for one or more, most votes wins. And if anyone has any questions, you can call me for details at 720-260-1493. And again, thank you all for doing such a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak? I'm not seeing anyone. Am I missing anyone? Okay. That brings us to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is comments and reports. Deputy City Manager.
Given the, the timing of the evening, I'll pass.
Okay. That brings us to council reports. Let me start with Councilmember Cole.
Just a real quick comment, that many of the things that people said, what, almost three hours ago, when they talked about all the wonderful things happening in the city, those are the result of the council's vision, goals, and objectives. And those vision, goals, and objectives, for the most part, in my mind, have come very much from the citizens. The city manager is responsible for implementing, and I think he did a damn good job of that. But they're council goals, vision, objectives. So thank you all for your input. Keep it up.
Councilmember Clark.
I'll, I'll make a comment, and that is, I believe that almost every ordinance, not every ordinance, but almost every ordinance, needs to come to the council as a study session before it comes to council as a first reading. When we have differences, significant differences between first reading and second reading, what that means to me is, is that we haven't discussed it and hashed out what the issues are in a study session beforehand. And so then it gets to first reading, we have something, then we modify it on first reading, or it gets to the second reading, and it's, and it's very different from what it is on first reading. I think the process ought to be that ordinance is the vast majority of them, come to council as a study session item first with the background that we need. We can talk about it at that point. We can then direct the council or the staff on how to bring that forward or whether to bring that forward as an ordinance on first reading. And then hopefully, there will be a minimal number of changes to that. I think that we have not been bringing nearly enough items to study session. They show up as first readings, and I think that that ends up lengthening the process rather than shortening the process. Because then we schedule it back to a study session and then try to schedule it back to a first reading. So I'd like to recommend that we do that. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoppin?
I really don't have much of a report, and it's been a late night. I, I do agree with, I believe it's Carol Porter, your comment that relationships with people who effectively work for you should be arms-length. And I've been taught that in virtually every leadership school or whatever that I've been to in my life and leadership position I've had, and it just works better. It doesn't mean that you can't be friendly. That's part of leadership, too, is, but I, I agree with your point, and I appreciate that. Frank, your phone message fell into my abyss, and I apologize. I will call you. And I do agree that four-three votes are fine, and I don't think anybody is quarreling with that. I think the quarrel tonight was how we got to the point of the vote. And I think that was a good discussion, and hopefully, we can move on from that. We all went to CML, not all of us, but most of council went to CML. I won't belabor that, but there were some very good presentations up there. It's always good to talk with other council members and, and people from other cities to see what works with them and what doesn't work. Littleton got a lot of attention at that meeting. I will say that wasn't all positive, but it was, there was a lot of it. So let's move forward, onward and upward, and hopefully, we have better days ahead. Thank you.
Councilmember Cernanik?
Yes, also attended CML, and I'm in the process of putting together a package, if anyone is interested, on the sessions that I did go to and some of the notes that were there. In conjunction with CML or in addition to CML, it was the legal appointment to the National League of Cities Leadership Conference is where I was last week. It's amazing how unique the city is, but some of our issues are shared across the nation. So when we're talking about affordable, particularly senior housing, dealing with transportation and infrastructure, the business environment in neighborhoods, how that is shared. And for the advocacy committees that I'm on, the two issues that came out is, is dealing with housing and in being able to deal with the workforce development, which is jobs and it's community and economic development. And those are ones that we're working on this year, and hopefully, they're, at least there's planned a lot of idea sharing. So some of that we may be able to bring back and mold it to something that will work here. Thank you.
Councilmember Valdez?
Thank you. Earlier was mentioned that it wasn't that long ago when there were no cars downtown parking on the streets. But I, I want to remind people that, gosh, since I was on the planning commission back in the late 90s, up and through 2010, about 2010, that's one of the things we always talked about was about the parking issues that we have downtown. So with too many cars down there, no place to park. So I'm, I'm not sure where, where that person was thinking, that there was no cars ever parking downtown, because there's been lots of cars. It's kind of like we talked about how people aren't going to have cars eventually someday, but yet we keep talking about how our streets are going to keep getting more crowded. It's, it always throws me a curve. The other, so, let's see, at the study session we had last week, the economist that, that was there had mentioned, at the last meeting, let's see, he had mentioned that the economy for the last five, six, seven years has been booming throughout the metro Denver area. And I tell you, if you go east of here, you'll see that, you know, Douglas County, Parker, Castle Rock, Aurora, even Commerce City, Brighton, they're all booming. So it isn't, it's never just because of one person that things are booming like they are right now. Economist also mentioned that we're likely to have a little bit of a decline here over the next few years. that we're likely to have a little bit of a decline here over the next few years, but the planning that we do today, and that's what he reminded us of, was the, the planning that we were doing and looking to do here in the near future is actually preparing us for when the economy is gearing up again, that we make the right decisions now, so that we can be poised to take advantage of those improving economy again. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Brinkman?
I have no report.
I just have one thing. Fourth of July. In my, in our neighborhood, we had a tremendous Fourth of July celebration. It was absolutely fantastic. We had a bouncing house. We had a dunk tank. We had a number of things. We had kids all over the place. At some points, we might have had 100 people there. We had a parade. And the reason I'm mentioning it is assistance to put that on was gotten from the city. The city, I didn't even know it until somebody told me that part of it was through applying for a neighborhood grant. And the neighborhood grant, through Mark Burns, our Neighborhood Service Officer in the city, provided just a little bit of income to make a tremendous Fourth of July party that lasted for about six hours. And the compliments and the comments about living in Littleton and what a special place it is, believe me, they were, they were just what the whole day was about. So happy Fourth of July. Have a neighborhood party. Get the city to assist you doing it. It's very important. We're adjourned.